Wash that well, which me and I don't know, can I be heard very well? I'm kind of looking at you guys, but that got really loud now. But the contractor that's going to be putting those chemicals in to try to treat the bacteria, wanted to flush for 24 hours. Well, with a well that produces 30, 3100 gallons per minute, that's not really doable. So I need to get with MAC on really how long it's going to take to do the flushing adequately. But we're still hoping to get that on as quickly as possible. We've got well number five. I probably should look at my notes to make sure I'm not, you know, if there's an update here. It's one to three weeks out on materials and well number five. The golf course well, the, the parts are, you know, it's under, it's underway right now. The fix is underway, but it won't be online until probably about July 1st as well. It's about three weeks out. So we've got all these wells that, three wells that are one to three weeks out. And we're going to hit 97 degrees on Saturday. From 12:00 PM on, 12:00 PM yesterday to 12:00 PM today, our tanks dropped, some, some of them dropped as much as half, just in one 24 hour period. We are asking, even though, and I, I mistyped in my text to council yesterday, we don't have in our code that we can mandate the evens, odds, addresses and Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday thing, but we're asking residents to do that. So if your odd addresses, if your address is an odd number, we'd ask you to water Monday, Wednesday, or use Monday, Wednesday, or Friday to water. The state's still recommending only two days this week and it's going to get really hot. So make sure you're watering in the, you know, outside of the 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM hours. But even addresses are being asked to use either Tuesday, Thursday, or Saturday to do their watering. This will allow Sunday to try to do some recovery on those tanks. But obviously the tanks are getting hit pretty hard right now because we are warming up. So we were crossing our fingers, we're hanging in there. We've increased our supply from Central Utah Water to try to compensate for that, which means we're going to get hit a little bit harder next year. But we should have an additional well, potentially even two additional wells on by next year at this time, which hopefully can compensate for that. So just wanted to give you guys those updates. So we're, again, I, I'm hoping that we can get through this week without water restrictions any further than what we're asking people to stick to just the two days and do the evens and odds addresses. But we'll, we'll keep you, keep you in the, in the know.
So I have a quick question.
Yeah.
So if, if there was a concern, could we do an emergency meeting to put those kinds of things in place? If, if it needed to happen?
Yep, and say yes, so.
And I would just, from my personal, I can't speak for anyone else, but I would like for that, if we do something like that, that should be temporary, not just.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I mean.
Not on an ongoing basis or that there's.
We are optimistic that by July 1st, we'll have all of those sources back online. Obviously, the one, the issue that affected well number one, again, MAC hasn't been able to find another example of this happening to this extent. So it's, it's out of the norm and it's been a challenge for us to address that. It's, it's hard to have a well that's fully functioning and you can't use it. But we have specifications that we have to abide by for the health of our residents and that's more important than landscaping is, as harsh as that may sound. That's the reality, so. We are, wastewater treatment plant is, we call them the bugs, but they're, they're thriving now with some of the things that they've been doing with adding chlorine treatments to the wastewater treatment plant. Just as FYI, the average daily flows of wastewater treatment plant are hitting almost a million gallons per day now. So it's, it's quite the operations going on down there. The city is going to be audited for our SWIP, stormwater operations. Lehigh got it, Saratoga Springs got it, and now it's our turn. So that's coming at the end of this month. Prep work, you guys probably have seen on near Hidden Hollow Elementary, that prep work for, for well number seven is underway. We're trying to avoid blasting, obviously, there's a lot of residents nearby and it would have to be very low charge, so they're, they've encountered a lot of rock. So we're trying to see how we can avoid that. So trying to get creative on how they're going to do sloping and things like that out there. There was a, well, I kind of skip around, again, all this stuff should be in that email. We're, we're looking at getting a, renting a generator for the White Hills well. And I think from what Chris told me today, that's imminent now. Should be able to get that here soon. That will add 1300 gallons per minute to the city system, specifically the city center. So again, a little bit of a silver lining to that dark storm cloud of what we're dealing with with other wells.
Can we, can we kind of add a little bit to the rest of that story? Because I, I don't know if it's obvious and we're, we've been waiting on power. We've had power issues out there, right? The equipment that we're waiting on.
The existing electrical infrastructure at the site does not support both wells being run at the same time. We will be upgrading with Rocky Mountain Power to have the ability to have both wells running at the same time. And we will be upgrading the one well before next season. But just as an interim solution, we have the opportunity to rent a generator for the summer so that we can actually have both wells pumping at the same time.
So truly an electrical capacity issue? It's an electrical capacity.
It's an electrical capacity.
And, and the generator is not a waste of money because we want one out there anyway, right? So, yeah, kind of a win, win, kind of, you know, making lemonade out of lemons kind of a thing, yeah.
And again, I mean, I, my understanding is we would run that during peak times, not constantly, that generator.
That's correct.
Just try to help us get through. Work is underway on Eagle Mountain Boulevard for the widening project, so that's good news. Moving on to streets and stormwater, we've got the sensor upgrade of the traffic signal at Ranches in Pony that's been delayed for another week due to concrete shortages. The Slurry Seal Project will begin this Thursday and it's going to take two to three weeks to complete. There will be daily road closures, but residents will be notified one weeks, one week in advance and then again, 24 hours in advance of when their road will be affected. Moving on to parks, recreation, and events, I just want to say a big thank you to events for both helping with the Memorial Day celebration and of course, another successful Pony Express Days. We also want to thank mayor, council, staff, all the U of, volunteers in UFA that helped out with that, as well as the sheriffs. The Pony Express Rodeo is June 9th through 11th, so this weekend. Staff had a kickoff for the Walden Park Observatory for the design of that building, Talza Telescopes. It's anticipated that I'll have construction documents by the first of September and that the observatory will be done, operating by spring of 2023. For Silver Lake Park, power connection has been finally completed on that. Staff will be working to close out the project with Stratton and Bratt. They're the contractors for that, for the power. Moving on to, sorry, I, there's a lot in here, so I'm trying to, in keeping with me trying to speed this up, I'm not, so. With communications, we've got this rock solid One View product, which is going to help with communications and task tracking for the city. It's going to be brought to city council for a vote on Jan, on June 21st, so two weeks from tonight. Where I talked about lawn watering recommendations, which is in this part as well. The citizens page on Facebook has had a lot of, a lot of attention this week, or I'd say the last couple of weeks. We will always encourage residents to submit issues that they have through the resident portal so we can track those more effectively. For community development, 91 residential permits were issued in May. We had a lot that were issued right at the end of the month, right on the 31st. It's basically holding true to what our 2020 level was, which was 92 permits for the same month. We're at 1,340 new residential permits for the fiscal year with one month remaining. So it's higher than 2020, but I think lower obviously than 2021. So it's anticipated that June, this month, right now, will be our second highest month ever. Vested units calculations project is nearing completion. We should have something, they should have something to share with you guys very soon. Meeting with Camp Williams and landowners to discuss conservation easement. That's a project that I think Todd is heading up right now. Let's see. Okay, we'll move on to facilities fleet and emergency management. The CD, it's community development building, the equipment garage, the building is completed and they'll start grading the floor for concrete. So the building's up, but they still need to do the, the floor. City Hall, the shingles, it's completed, I think they're just doing some, just touch up work. It's done, okay. I heard, I heard some pounding earlier, so I thought, okay, maybe it's like done as of, as of like 15 minutes ago, so. Yeah, okay.
They're just finishing up the punch list.
Right, exactly, like literally, the punch list. So the city hall interior paint project is in process. You can see some, some of the walls already taped. They'll be painted, I think the library was just painted over Memorial Day weekend, is that right? Okay, half of it. The security system at sewer facility is about 98% complete. The office remodel for the sewer facility is about 95% done. Right now, we did talk a little bit about, I already addressed Eagle Mountain Boulevard is, is beginning. They're actually grubbing the southwest side of Eagle Mountain Boulevard right now. By way of announcement, we've got HAM radio classes. There's one that already happened on June 2nd, but another one on June 15th, June 23rd, June 30th, with an exam on the 2nd of July. Macy's grand opening by way of economic development is this Wednesday, or I guess tomorrow, sorry. 10:00 AM, forget it's Tuesday already. And we are, designs public finances, working on an initial draft with the Economic Development Master Plan and finalizing interviews with key stakeholders for that project. So I'm done, unless you got.
Is it possible to get them to come in to talk to the council? I just think it would be more valuable to have.
That is part of that.
Together, rather than individually.
Are you talking about, sorry, as far as interviews go, or just to the progress?
I, I mean, I, I've seen some of like the, the questions and I just, I, I don't know how helpful the questions are going to be to get to our economic development strategy.
Okay, Aaron, did you want to, Aaron's going to come up and address that.
Yeah, I think it's a, a simple answer. I mean, obviously they have been doing interviews individually, but if we tell them, hey, we want you to come in for a work session and kind of get an overall feel for the council together, I, I don't think that'd be a problem to have them do that. And I, I'll reach out to them and see when we, when we could get that scheduled.
Certainly, that's only if everyone else would find that valuable, but.
Well, it, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're still in research mode?
A lot of it at this point has been research mode, but I think it, it is a part of it because they do want to get the key stakeholder vision and kind of input. You know, that's why, you know, individually as council members, but I think there could be value to the body as well. I'm just glad to get that, but to this point, it really has been a lot of just researching into, into the data. In our last meeting, we went over a lot of the sales tax leakage information and no surprise, we're hemorrhaging sale, retail sales. But that's what has been to this point, but certainly if that's what the council would like, we can arrange that with Zion's.
See, and I guess just to be more specific, I'm looking at what are the different types of strategies that we can employ, right? Because for me, it's more about, okay, here are your options, where do you want to focus our efforts on doing research? If, if they're doing research down something that we don't think is, is the right direction, then that would be a wasted effort, if that makes sense, and so.
Yeah, and I don't think that's the case. And the research is to, is, is not to go different directions.
Yeah, a lot of it at this point has been more of the statistical data, just getting an overall picture of where we are, where we compare from a baseline standpoint. As far as directing is to say, you should do this and here's a, here's how you do that. They haven't done any of that work yet. That is, again, kind of what process would be and if it would be useful to include the, the council as a body in that, then we can arrange a meeting to have Zion's come in and kind of gain a pulse on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron.
Mayor, if there's no other questions, that's, that's it, oh.
Please. Paul and I talked to you about this yesterday, just briefly, and I, and you probably haven't had time to follow up on this. I was over in Silver Lake and I'm just curious about the connection on Silver Creek Way that's going to connect back into the south side of Silver Lake across the wash. What, what's the timeline that we're looking at for that to happen? Because the road network is in there. I'm just hoping that's going to be completed before school starts in August.
Part of it, I think, is, is we had submitted for a grant for some of the drainage in that area, including the, the culvert crossing for that. And we wanted to do a series of check dams before it got to that point. And then the developers are responsible for the crossing itself. We never got word back on whether or not we got any funding for that grant. So we're trying to figure out how we're going to do this. It is something, it's at a facility that's identified in our impact fees. So it is impact fee eligible, but we're just trying to, I actually met with the developers yesterday to try to work through some of those issues of what we're going to do, how much, what's our portion, what's their portion, and what the time is going to be on that.
And, and I can add to the conversation that council member right now had, Chris, was, you know, the, the possibility of having that done before school starts because of the potential that kids would need to use that route to get there.
Yeah, I, I think that's safe route to school and having that, everything, all the other infrastructures in there, except for that, as far as I can see.
That's, I think that's correct, yeah. And we talked about temporary things, because as you know, right now, pipe is hard to find. Pre-cas, they're not doing pre-cas culverts, period, in Utah. And that would have been the route that we would have gone. But we did get some pricing for cast and place culverts. But we are also looking at some smaller pipes and doing stacked pipe instead of a larger culvert. But I think one of the things that I talked to, to Mayor Westmoreland about was keeping with the culvert, because the culvert would be an eight by 10 culvert, which would help facilitate some of the wildlife corridor through that area, so. And I haven't even talked to Paul or Tom, it was a fresh conversation that I had yesterday, so.
Chris, do you think that's an unrealistic expectation to set a goal to be ready before school starts?
I think it's flushing it, yeah.
Okay. I'm going to encourage us to do what we can, recognizing that there might be limitations to supplies and materials, but I don't know how the rest of council feels, but man, I'd like to see that go in sooner rather than later, if possible.
We'll see what we can do. It's, it, like Paul mentioned earlier, concrete's hard to come by right now, so.
It's all, it's all hard to come by right now. So I appreciate the efforts and I recognize that that might be a tall ask. I just wanted, wanted to be able to answer some residents' questions.
We discussed alternatives, things that we could do as a median midterm that could be corrected long term. But, you know, it's 20 feet of fill on top of that culvert, so it's hard to do hardly anything without a lot of, of expense to remove it and do it again later correctly, so.
So, so I mean, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding. What I'm hearing is that we applied for a grant, but we don't know whether it was granted or not, or it wasn't.
We've never heard from NCRS and the last time we tried to contact them, they kind of said, don't call us.
We kind of hit that wall where we're now going to.
So I think we need to come up with some other funding solutions.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, thank you, everyone. Let's go on to item 1B, water efficiency landscaping standards. Evan's been putting in a lot of work here, so bring us up to date.
Okay, so this is meant to be just a discussion opportunity to get your feedback and concerns and comments as we've done some analysis on the concept of water efficient landscaping standards. This is not something new to Utah. Other cities have already implemented standards throughout Utah. But we're now addressing it knowing that we have a lot of growth in our future and that this is something we should potentially consider as, as a, a way to manage some of our, our water needs. So just to provide some, some context as far as some of the justification behind why we're looking at this. Our, our question of water supply, of course, is one of those things that comes up frequently for us. We know that in Utah, the primary water use is irrigation use. That could be both for agriculture, but also for residential lawn irrigation. In Eagle Mountain specifically, it is mostly residential lawn irrigation. Most of our agriculture is, is not using a lot of water. Eagle Mountain's water supply, we have a number of strategies and we're working extensively to, to make sure that there is sufficient water supply in the years to come, knowing that there is tremendous growth on the horizon. But that being said, even with a lot of these strategies that we have underway, including, you know, expansion of our reuse capacity and so on and so forth, we will still potentially be short by 2060. We know that there's a lot that we can do when it comes to irrigation use. You know, as we've talked about before with the, the water rates discussions and things like that, we know that on average, the average Eagle Mountain homeowner uses twice as much water as we should be. And so there's just a lot of opportunity there to particularly go after trying to reduce some of those water, some of that water use. You've probably heard a lot of discussion about different rebate programs around conservation, water conservation. Flip the Strip is one that's very common that a lot of people know about. There's other rebate programs as well, some that focus around local scaping and other things as well. This is important to us and this, these standards that we're talking about today because these are available to Eagle Mountain residents, but only temporarily. If we do not have standards in place, like the ones that we're talking about today, Eagle Mountain residents won't have access to those rebates anymore come the end of the calendar year. After talking with the Central Utah Water Conservancy District, they do have some minimum standards, some loose minimum standards of what they expect to have in those water efficiency landscape standards for us to qualify, for our residents to be able to get those rebates still. But that is, that is a primary requirement of making that available to residents. And it does, it does save quite a bit of money for residents who are interested in, in doing that. We've been looking at this as well because there's some, some issues with consistency throughout the city as far as how different developments are, are trying to advocate for local scaping or for water efficient landscaping. And sometimes it goes well, sometimes it's not going so well. There's a few examples of this where, for, this is a, I have a couple of aerial shots of the overland subdivision. So this is one area of the overland subdivision where you see basically no water efficient landscaping principles being applied here. It's just all turf grass. But then you have other examples where they do have some water efficient landscaping and, and Ivory has been, Ivory Homes has been awarded for their efforts towards the local scapes and water efficient landscaping. But you'll, if, if you know anything about local scaping, you'll, you'll be able to look at some of these images and see that there are actually some parts of this that are contrary to what local scapes teaches you to do. For example, you're not supposed to have those planter islands or those kidney bean islands in the middle of turf grass that makes watering turf grass very inefficient. So there are some principles that we just want to try and help potentially convey. But these, this, this also matters because in addition to what we do with the rebates, there's still an added cost that the residents still need to reconcile with. And we want to make sure that those costs are going to something that's going to be effective for them. You know, if you, if you do a conversion to a zero scape or a local scape lawn, ineffectively, you could potentially set yourself up for a maintenance disaster where you're, you're basically setting yourself up for a lot more work when you were hoping to have less work. And like I said, it could be costly, so even after all the rebates are applied, you could still be spending up to 1,500 to 2,000 dollars. That's just based on my, my own calculations using a, a sample property in the city, trying to run through the entire process with that property. So there, there are some negative implications if we, if there are, if the, the public is not guided to some extent with this. Taking it a little bit further as well, there are some who have already made conversions and it's, there are some potential implications if those conversions are not done well, where like I said before, you are kind of setting yourself up for a bit of, a bit of a problem with maintenance long term. But then also it can affect nearby property values and things like that if it's, if it is not well maintained or if it's not well done. There's several examples here, just where a lot of properties throughout Eagle Mountain have attempted this, have just put rock everywhere they can. And I'm not one to necessarily say what you should and shouldn't do and everyone has their own intent behind how they want to use their property and whatnot. But this is, as far as our interest goes, is just wanting to make sure that we can, we can help provide for residents to make the best decisions. And coming back to the idea of setting themselves up for some problems in the future, this is another example. We have four homes who have all done different conversions, all right next to each other. And they all, I, I think that it's, it's great that they've done a lot of work to, to make that change, but there are still some parts of this that without guidance on that. but there are still some parts of this that, without guidance on that, without some sort of a standard, there are some issues with some of their conversions. If you look at some of the historical imagery, there have been constant issues with them trying to keep up with the maintenance, but then also with just some of the how they've laid out the turf grass that makes it inefficient to try and water and things like that. So this is, of course, up to you as far as how much, how much you feel like it is our role to try and direct or influence on this. But moving beyond that, there are also other parts throughout the city that are not residential-related, where we have properties where there's lots of turf grass in places where it makes no sense necessarily to have turf grass, where there's no functional use of those, there's not play areas, it's not, it's not used for anything other than just for its aesthetic qualities. So this happens right away along all sorts of roadways across the city, but then also happens in business areas where, on the one hand, you can see some areas where it is zero-scape and yet in other areas next adjacent, we have turf grass, again, in a non-functional area where it's just there for aesthetic purposes. And we even have it on our own city property, where on the one hand, we have our fountains that are recycling, you know, recirculating water, kind of demonstrating that we can manage water well, and yet right next to that, we have turf grass that we have no purpose for, other than for its aesthetic appeal. So applying these principles universally across the city, not just with residential but with commercial, institutional, industrial and so, and so forth, there's lots of, lots of places throughout the city where there is turf grass that doesn't need to be. Turf grass being, as you know, the main culprit for high water use. So just to kind of give you some context of where this has kind of started, so there's both the Central Utah Water Conservancy District and the Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District and others throughout the state have already drafted some sample code for us to kind of get a baseline or a foundation to start from. And so we had started off using Central Utah Water Conservancy District's code, and some cities have implemented that code word-for-word, others have pulled out sections. We opted to take more time with it and pull pieces of it apart. There were some parts of it that we felt that was a little too restrictive or a little too over the top, and other parts we felt like were leaving some gaps of understanding and that we needed some more information or maybe some certain exceptions that it wasn't really accounting for. So that's just as your, for your information, that's where this is starting from. It's, there's going to be a lot of similarities to what Central Utah Water Conservancy District had, but we do have some differences. So to kind of break it down a little bit, we're just going to highlight some of the most important parts of it. And in this, you'll see at the top, we have kind of the text of what we have in our draft code and then the comments of what the Central Utah Conservancy District has. So, for example, we have in there the requirement that all new construction would have water sense labeled plumbing fixtures such as showers and showerheads and faucets and things like that. And the Central Utah Water version is just recommended, encouraged. We opted to make that required, you know, because it's not, it's not a big leap for developers for new construction to do that. Most new homes already have water sense labeled appliances, so I feel like that is a reasonable request. Looking at irrigation, this is identical to what the Central Utah Water Conservancy District has, where irrigation just needs to be appropriate for the designated plant material. We're making requirements for drip irrigation in certain areas and that we need to make sure that those, the irrigation is appropriate for the slope, the soil conditions and all that. We have the landscape areas, need to have the smart irrigation controllers. Again, this is identical to what the Central Utah Water has, but this is also something I don't think is a big leap for most new developments as well. I've been hearing from those who have purchased new homes recently that those are already being included anyway, so this is something that should be easy to do. This is also pretty identical to the Central Utah Water Conservancy District, where landscape areas should have enough plant material to create at least 50% living plant cover at the ground plane, and then inclusion of three or four inches of mulch permeable to air and water. And then we just added a reference to existing city code that talks about what kinds of mulch is appropriate for places like park strips. Something that we had added, that Central Utah Water Conservancy District doesn't have, is the requirement for non-functional turf is prohibited. Non-functional turf being defined as just as a, as just turf grass that basically has no purpose other than for aesthetic value. So if it's not being used for play areas, for sports fields, for anything like that, then we will be prohibiting non-functional turf in that regard. This is also something that's not necessarily new. City of Las Vegas has been getting a lot of attention for this recently, because they recently made that a requirement. This is also identical, no lawn in the park strips going forward with new construction, no lawn or turf grass on any slopes greater than 25%, and then any areas that are less than eight feet wide at the narrowest point. This is a, that's a requirement from the Central Utah Water Conservancy District, that if we don't have that requirement in there, then we don't have access to those rebates. That's one of those specific ones that they insist on. All of these things having to do with just, it's very inefficient to try and water spaces that are that narrow, as well as with slopes, once you get slopes greater than 25%, trying to fight, you know, the dynamics or the physics of water at that point is really challenging. This is one that's very different.
That one is required?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, can you repeat that? What is it that's required? The 25?
Yeah, the whole statement, the eight feet wide and that, yeah.
Is anything required, so lawn is prohibited?
Right.
Is anything required in the park strips?
That's up to us if we wanted to determine that. So the Conservancy District said we can, we can define that how we want. They said, you know, as we have it in our draft code right now, we would require 50% of that to be living material, plant cover. But other cities don't have that requirement. Some just allow for zero scape instead of zero scape. So there's, that could be up to us, how we wanted to find that. This is the one that gets a little different, because we have something in here that's a little unique to Eagle Mountain. So the first part of this is not unique, where they start off with the requirement that this front and side yards would not have an excess of 250 square feet of lawn or 35%, of the total landscape area. So the important part of that is we're only talking about the front and side yards here. What happens in the backyard is very different. They're not suggesting we restrict the amount of grass in the backyard. They're just suggesting that the grass total in the front and side yards would not be more than 35% of that total landscape area. That total landscape area does not include like driveway space and sidewalks and has like that. We added in this other section here where we're saying single-family residential properties, quarter acre or smaller, which has the combined square footage in the front and side yards twice as large as the greater, or greater as the rear yard square footage, would be permitted, lawn areas up to 50% of the total landscape area. And so this was done just because after going through and sampling the impacts of this on several properties across the city, there are numerous properties that have much larger front yards than they do have backyards, and their backyards are so small that it becomes very difficult for families or anyone to do anything out in those backyards. And so to accommodate for those types of properties, we would want to make sure that those with really small backyards have the opportunity to have more grass in those front yards, to have some useful space. But we capped it at the quarter acre, because there are a number of properties also that are larger than a quarter acre that do have, are back up to a hillside or something like that, but they have a tremendous amount of space in the front, where having 35% of the total landscape areas turf is still plenty of turf grass, if that makes sense. So this is just an example I want to show you. I did go through and sample different kinds of lot situations. I did this sort of thing where I measured the different areas of different lots and did this in three different kinds of definitions of what a total landscape area could be, just to kind of determine the best outcome for residents, to get us the most grass while at the same time being the most reasonable as far as where that grass lands and making it as most accessible and unusable for residents.
So is the blue where grass could be?
Yes.
Sorry, can we see that for a minute more?
Yeah. So you'll notice that like in the backyards, this is divided up based on the definitions that we have on what a side yard, a backyard, a front yard would be. So the backyard would be defined as where the, basically the back of the building and the structure is. And so everything that's behind that is untouched, you know, we're only talking about turf grass area on the side and front yards, so all the blue sections in the front yards there, that's 35% of that area.
Okay, that's helpful.
This is also identical to the Central Utah Water Conservancy District, where we have for commercial, industrial, and institutional multifamily, lawn areas shall not exceed 20% of the total landscape area, so less, but the caveat of that is outside of active recreation areas, and those active recreation areas are those park spaces, are those bigger field spaces where you're doing a lot more of your activities and things like that, so. And then you have the, some of the exceptions that have to do with stormwater management as well. So just to kind of summarize some of the differences in here, so with Central Utah Water, some things that you didn't see, that we didn't talk about, is so we pulled out quite a bit of content from theirs that had to do specifically with the layout or the placement of the turf grass. They had some specific things in there that were directing towards very specific local scapes provisions, where they wanted to have, the turf grass needs to be in a central open shape, and they had to have gathering areas around that. And there's, there's just a lot of these other things that we felt like it makes sense to have, but it may not make sense for everyone. And having seen, you know, dozens of different property types and different configurations of how residents are using properties, we wanted to remove that to try and expand the different possibilities people could still work with their landscape. And then their landscaping requirements, the entire code only has to do with front and side yards only, whereas there were some parts of it that we felt like could still be reasonably impactful to the backyards, such as it doesn't make sense to separate out the smart meters just for front and side yards. We should have smart meters for the entire property, things like that. So there are some parts of it that it just, it made sense to reasonably keep that for the whole property as a whole, so. But then, as mentioned before, we have that exception with some of those properties with small backyards. We added that prohibition of non-functional turf, and then we add definitions of the front side and rear yards, which is something that they didn't do in theirs. Something else to consider, so Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District, as I said, they also have their own set of, their own sample code for cities to use. Theirs, it's very similar, but there are some things in theirs that they have that Central Utah Water Conservancy District does not have, just so I wanted to bring these to your attention in case there's some things that you want to consider. So for example, they have some text in there that talks about HOA compliance, where HOA governing documents or other restrictions would be voided or unenforceable if they required turf beyond the restrictions or restrict compliance with the city code or other water conservation measures. They also have content in there having to do with soil preparation, just ensuring that the soil has been scarified, you know, there's been work done to make sure that the soil is prepared for a good, healthy lawn. But then they also require model homes. They require an example model home that has the water-efficient landscaping option in new subdivisions, so that the potential home buyers can see that and have that option.
So how does number one work? I mean, we've been told for years that we can't meddle in HOA, CCNRs. That allows us to?
We're allowed to trump them when it comes to water use, right? Like if they, I can't remember the whole law.
So I think water use is very much tied to parking, right? I'm just kidding. Okay, that makes sense, if there's a specific law.
So yeah, that's what I have for you, just like I said, this is, I wanted to get your feedback, your concerns, your questions about this, so that we know where to go with it if you are, you know, interested in percent forward.
Can I start out with a question? Because you and I haven't had a chance to really visit on this, so I apologize. As you mentioned, I believe you mentioned earlier that, you know, something like zero-scape can, I mean, there's a science to it, right? Where if you don't do it right, you end up with a bigger problem than when you started, and... What are your thoughts on, you know, how much the city can, should, you know, ought to and can providing guidance in, you know, much like our building standards, right? We get into like the size of boards and wires and things and, you know, we could, and I, you know, we're feeling our way through this, but, but, you know, might we get that detailed into landscaping methods? I, like, I really appreciated the soil preparation element in here, because, you know, I'm sure we've all experienced that, when, you know, when a lawn is put in inexpensively, you pay for it forever. But yeah, I don't know, could you speak to that a little bit? Any, like, are we, do you think, do you think we're built to get into more detail on this?
Can I just add to that? I think I saw an article about a zero scape in Lehigh, and Lehigh, I believe, regulated the rocks, or the type of rock that you could have. And so somebody had put it in and it wasn't up to their standards. So that's one thing that you could be talking about, right?
Right, yeah, there's a lot of little details.
Either how we do it or what's included, yeah.
That's one thing that we've been trying to avoid, and we didn't want to get to that level. Felt like we wanted to just at least, the focus of this is on water efficiency. We're trying to reduce the amount of turf grass without creating a little bunch of other secondary issues out of it, so we could just blanket, you know, let's reduce the amount of turf grass and then have residents approach it however they wish. There's just, there have been enough experiences that have been observed where that has turned out poorly, which, I mean, I use that term loosely, because that's up to definition, your own interpretation, that there are some things we feel like we should do to try and reduce the potential negative outcomes come the future, because it is, turf grass is very easy to work with. I mean, I say that knowing that I fight my grass daily, trying to keep it alive, but, but, you know, you can plant it, you can remove it, you can plant it and remove it, and so on. But when it comes down to, you know, you're putting down a whole bunch of rock and you're getting into a much bigger landscape plan, that becomes much more difficult to alter in the future, especially when you're talking about, you're making the change from turf grass to zero scape or a local scape, you're now having to, you should be making changes to your irrigation system as well. You're now going from sprays to drips and all sorts of things. You're making big substantial changes that now become difficult to reverse or to alter if you realize that something is now becoming more burdensome to maintain, and it just adds to the ongoing expenses. So we didn't want to get to the level where we're saying Eagle Mountain should look this way, or your property should only work this way, or, you know, it's, we don't want to be so limiting that way. At the very least, we just want to try and get to the point where we're reducing the amount of water being used, but doing so in a way that doesn't create a big burden on our neighborhood enforcement, doesn't create a big burden on our property values and so on and so forth.
I had a, oh, sorry. I wanted to piggyback on that. Were you moving somewhere else?
I was going to talk about rocks, but...
Can I just piggyback on that and then? So do we have current minimum landscape standards now?
We do, but they're kind of spread out throughout, you know, the city code.
So do those go away? Like, are they things that would go away?
We would be bringing those, yeah. We would be bringing those to you to potentially remove, replace, or change in some way, so.
Okay, so I guess my feedback, because I'm not completely up to, I'm not completely educated on what they currently are, but I feel like we should have some standards. You know, some standards as to plants or trees or something that's required, a minimum standard. And then we have code enforcement concerning... that's required, a minimum standard. And then we have code enforcement concerning weeds, right? And I, I would imagine that the, the code enforcement as far as weeds work is concerned would follow, would also apply to the zero escaping. That you need to kind of keep it for your weeds. Okay.
Just really quickly, I would just, I would hesitate to encourage a lot of rock in the landscaping unless we limit the size of that rock. My kids live in a neighborhood in Eagle Mountain. It's new and so all the park strip is rocked and they're, they're not boulders or anything, but
They're throwable sized.
They're throwable and they have thousands of dollars worth of damage to their car from a neighbor kid throwing the rocks at their brand new car. So now the neighbor has to figure out how they're going to pay, you know what I mean? Kids just do things with rocks.
Since the beginning of time, rocks in people's park strips have always been for children to throw. It's just a reality.
I love the look of those. I have those at my house, but I, I do admit the neighbor kids relocate them and play with them and yeah.
I think the difficulty of that is just, there are good applications of that where you get into some nitpicking of what kinds of rock are we talking about? Because obviously there's flagstone type of major rocks that were meant to just sit on a wall. But then, you know, we've seen several properties, I've, I've talked to homeowners who have built-in, you know, dry riverbed type things where they had much bigger rocks that obviously no one's going to pick up and move. So there may be some things where we, we have to kind of hope for the best, I guess. Because I know what you mean.
Do you happen to know how much of that two-thirds of the water that we use in landscaping is in yards versus open space?
I don't, no.
Okay. One of the things that I was thinking that maybe we should consider is, I don't know, this, this is where I, I think you all know me well enough that me, I'm, I'm trying to predict the future of all the various ways that this could go wrong. Because I'm just trying to war game it out. And, and so some of the things that I, that I'm thinking about is, is could we potentially start by focusing on open spaces that are under HOA control? Because that would limit the individuals who would have to put in put in zero scape yards. I think there would be less problems with unseemly looking zero escaping or
You're saying work with HOAs on
First, start with work, work with HOAs and then work whenever we approve a new project. We say unless this is going to be a field, you know, a playfield, which you might have a case for one playfield, but unless it's a playfield we focus on. Through that process, having an approval where your landscape plan gets approved and it's got to meet some of these requirements, but we can give direction or something to that nature. Then it doesn't rely on the compliance. I think that one of the problems that, that I foresee is that we know that, that I think it's kind of been a longstanding thing. We've been a little bit laissez faire as far as, historically as a, as an organization on, on matters of compliance as far as yards and other things. And it's only in the past little while that we've changed a little bit out of that, that direction to be, to be a little more aggressive, I guess is the word, but trying to be understanding of people. And, and so I, I think one of the biggest problems is, is who, who's going to enforce that if we do this with every resident? And I just don't think it's reasonable. I, I don't think that it will happen.
Wouldn't this be new construction?
Yes, primarily, yeah.
Right.
New construction and then if you are going to change your yard and go to a local scape, you need to follow these.
Right, but then someone has to keep track of which one's a new construction versus not, which is a new construction. The new person moves in, they don't ask anybody. They just rip out that zero escaping. They don't like them putting grass or whatever they, right? Those are the types of things that I'm thinking about is, is, is how do we get people to comply with that? And is it, is it reasonable to get them to comply with it? Does that make sense? I, I'm not saying that I'm not against it. I, I think it's a great idea. I would love for us to have more zero escaping. It's, it makes sense. But I wonder if, if we've got an HOA involved, the maintenance is going to be far more likely. With, with zero escaping, you've got the problem of weeds tend to stay a little bit less aggressive when they're in a lawn than when they are just out of some rocks, right? My rock beds I have to spray constantly to get those weeds to go back down. And then, but I don't know, that's just the thought that I have. I don't know that that's necessarily even the direction that I want to go on, just throwing out.
Okay, yeah, just, I do want to wrap it up. We, we've been an hour, we've gotten through two.
That's one of the things we've talked about, Evan and I and Steve, when we've discussed this is, that was one of the big things is how are we going to, how are we going to enforce the standards on new construction? Are we going to hire, you know, fifty code enforcement officers? That's might, might be what it takes. That's not obviously what we want to do. HOAs was one of the things we talked about is using the HOA to help continue to enforce what was originally mandated for their subdivision, what it was actually put in. As far as the older, or, or, you know, like, let's say I rip out my, all my grass and you know, because I'm not, I'm not under an HOA and I'm not new construction. That's where we, you're going to have to have some enforcement, some level enforcement. Evan looked, and I'm speaking for Evan, sorry, on this. Evan looked into other cities and asked cities that have done this, well, what do you do when you know, maybe you asked for a lower water allocation for that lot because they put in water wise landscaping and someone from back east moves in and puts all grass in. That's where you, it's a little bit of a give and take. I don't want to show all of our cards here, obviously, but you're going to, there's, there's going to be some some losses on this to some extent that are going to they're going to have to be accepted for the overall water savings that hopefully we can get down to with some kind of code in the future.
So if we have additional feedback, do you want us just to email Evan with that?
Please. Yeah, yeah, definitely. There will be, you know, opportunities for more correspondence on this.
Just one quick question, and it's really just a question for thought, is how does this apply to lots that are larger than a quarter acre? I didn't see anything that really kind of outlines that. You know, we're talking about quarters acres.
We have an exemption for a quarter acre.
And under.
Yeah, but the rest of it doesn't apply. The exemption was, there's a thirty-five percent.
That's, that applies if you, if you don't have a backyard, basically.
If you don't have a very big backyard, you get to have fifty percent in your front yard.
Well, you know, I'm on four and a half acres and I've got like a thirty by thirty patch of grass and I don't even need that. I'll just tell you that.
No, but, but I really, sorry, go ahead.
And, and we haven't really found much of an issue with the larger lots, that most larger lots, I mean, you can look at plenty of properties in Eagle Mountain where they could put in a whole lot more turf grass according to this, but they don't.
We obviously have some one acre properties that are completely filled with grass from landscaping, right? So I, I just, I just want to be contemplative of what these restrictions mean to larger lots. Especially if we're headed in that direction as a council, if we're pushing for that, looking for those types of developments, we need to recognize that that's something we better have a conversation.
Well, I think the large lots will have rules of grass for what they want to do.
There's some things where I've been trying to, to maybe redefine a little bit of our total landscape area, because there are some lots that also use a good section of their property for, for horses, for other animals, or for urban farming and things like that. So do those count towards a total percent of the landscape area or should those be exempted kind of thing? So we're still working through something.
Mine's a sagebrush farm. If you want sagebrush seed, come to my house. You can get all you want.
No, I appreciate that you put in that for the smaller lots, because where I live, there's a lot of very, very small backyards. And so the front yards are used more and I've seen that. And, and I like that we're trying to be flexible and not overly prescriptive. And the, the one thing that I would say is I don't see anything about weed barriers. Because to me, the key, the key to making this work is weed barrier. My Fieldstone house, when I moved in, had really nice weed barrier. I mean, I would have probably planted tons of plants in there and I saw that nice weed barrier and I'm like, I'm not going there. I'm not going to weed.
We looked at that specifically and the recommendations now from the Conservation Garden Park and from all these other groups is that weed barriers are actually detrimental to the landscapes. That they don't necessarily add any more value to the, to the reduction of the weeds as long as you have the proper amount of rock. And it can also impact the quality of the soil underneath long term. So with those different kinds of advice coming out now from, for weed barriers, we specifically did not include that, but we can, I can send you some information that I have seen on it. You can let me know if you want me to, to look at that more.
Would you, would you send me some information? Because as far as maintenance and trying to keep your yard looking nice, it's, it's a night and day difference between what kind of effort has to go into it when there's a weed barrier and when there's not.
All right, thank you, Evan. Okay, let's go to item one C, discussion on Eagle Heights Village. And Steve, do you have something for us?
Yeah, Fieldstone Homes, Jason and his team are here to present some concepts of changes to their plan for Eagle Heights Village. If you recall, they came, he came recently to a council meeting and requested some assistance in working with him to create, you know, some changes to the project. And, and at the request of some council members, they asked him to come and present. Come on up.
Thank you. I'm going to make two really quick comments on the landscape. Do it. Like it's needed, don't wait. Second one is don't do it in isolation. Invite us to the table. We'll happily help you, guide you on, on ways to do it. Landscape and, and be reasonable in the process. I know, I know that my builder friends would, would also be happy to be a part of that.
Well, and I imagine that there's a little bit of a, a market pushback. People that are buying homes are going to want something specific as well, I would think.
Potentially, I think we can overcome that pretty easily, to be honest. But, and you have to, you have to look at it not just, just a water only thing. You got to look at the whole picture of the home cost and everything altogether.
So I know, I know there's a lot to cover and so I, I'll try to be brief, but I am here to answer questions. So what you have in front of you is the result of a conversation that I've primarily had with Brett. When I came here and I just said, hey, I, I'm, I'm concerned about this Eagle Heights subdivision and, and what's going to happen with it long term. Fieldstone is going to put their name on it and I, I just, I want to see something better. And that was my appeal to you as a council. And, and Brett reached out to me. We talked through some things and I understand that there may be only two opinions in this so far and, and I invite yours as well. I, I'm on a freight train headed for the, the current duplexes. I, I want to stop that train. This is my, this is my plea to, to you to do that, but I understand that it may not even be possible. So with your attention, I will just kind of walk you through what the conversation has been so far and why I'm here before you in a work session to get your feedback. And you just tell me at the end of this, Jason, just go away. We've had enough of you. Or, or, or we're on to something and I, and I think we're on to something. I hope we're on to something. So with that, if I go too quick, slow me down. I, I want to be respectful of your time. But, but let me start with this. There, in the concept, this is after several iterations, the concept that's before you is, is, is this. Convert the current plan, right, which you'll, you'll see in your packet, I have just some of those elevations, right? Convert the current plan to something for sale. And then take it one step further and let's add as much single family as we can to that plan. Phase three in the current project is mostly developed. And so that includes what you see in kind of the lart, the, the light brown where it says there's some twin homes. But we also have modified some things to try to add additional single family as a buffer to the east, right? And obviously as a buffer to the south. Within this, we also did a little bit of a comparison out of some concerns that we heard both from the council and, and from Brett specifically in a sit down with him. And also I should mention Jared and I had a chance to talk about some of these points as well. So there have, there have been some high level conversations around it.
The twin homes that are in process, they're the, the, the version that has been built in the past, correct?
We're going to talk about that.
Okay.
The short answer is yes. The long answer is I don't want to do them. And I've got a, I've got an alternative proposal I want to make around that. So I've also created a little table, and I shouldn't say, I shouldn't take all the credit. Rob helped me out a ton on this. Created a little table to kind of create a comparison, because I do know that there is you know, a, a strong desire to, you know, meet sort of the, the new code, today's code, right? In this, in this, in this instance, we've kind of looked at the RC to say, hey, what would happen if we got to these fifty-eight foot frontages and so on. So the comparison you'll see in the table is there, everything matches really well, except for two areas. And so those are, those are the pain points that we got to talk about, right? Which is the open space is less in this plan, right? The yards get bigger, the homes, the frontages get bigger, the, but, but some open space is lost in that. And I can explain to you where and how, when you're ready for that. And then the other one is that the average lot size, right? There's this average that's in, in that RC code that's six thousand square feet. In this plan that we're proposing on the single family homes, those are five thousand four hundred sixty. So we're just shy of that. So those are the two main points, but in every other category, we meet or exceed. So let's talk about the exceed for a second. The exceed is on, if you look at the amenity points, right, this, this plan is, exceeds the amenity points area. In addition, the clubhouse is, right, there's, there's a requirement that there be two clubhouses, right? And under, under code, those are, the minimum is twenty, is twelve hundred square feet per, right? When you add in what is planned for both the existing clubhouse and the new clubhouse, which is also featured in your second page, the combined is forty-nine, a little over forty-nine hundred square feet, which is, you know, fifty-one percent more clubhouse, right?
These, these numbers that you're talking about, do they apply to the blue area, the single family area here?
Primarily, yes. Because, because those are, those are the areas that would apply to RC, what we're trying to compare to.
So when you're talking about this, you're talking about what you've got here in blue?
No, I'm actually, all of this technically actually applies to both, because we, this is the difficult part, right? When we try to just say, make it RC, we also still have the current master, master development agreement and the current duplex plans that are associated with it. So some components have to come together. So the amenity points, we have to look at the entire project because we're trying to provide all of those.
So Mr. Harris, I, I just want to clarify this, because I think this is what Councilmember Love is asking. So Carolyn, are you, are you asking, I think, I believe, I think the amenity points represent the overall project?
Yeah, it's not that. For, for me, it really is frontage. So, so the frontage minimums, you're meeting it on the blue, I take it. But obviously you're not meeting it on the twin homes, right?
No, because the twin homes don't, they would apply under the current MDA.
Okay, so the, the frontage minimum is on the, so the twin homes, the, the actual standards, they obviously don't meet the RC standards because they're twin homes. Is that where we're going? Okay.
Yep, so just, that's the tricky part is we've got two different things we're looking at here. So, so overall, those are the, those are the main points. I will make this other point that isn't in here, but it is probably worth mentioning is on the side setbacks, right? Where you have eight and ten, right? In the case of what we're proposing, we, we can even get to ten and ten. So the sidebacks for us, what we're talking about are even, are even bigger. And so if that was something that was helpful to the conversation, we're open to it. The other piece that Brett and Jared that I talked to you about that isn't in this plan, that was a mistake on our part, is the lot count, the total lot count, right? The, the sort of vested is a hundred and forty, a hundred and forty-eight units, right? This is a reduction of ten. I talked to you about eight. We had, we had made a mistake in our conversation, because at one point, that open space right here is the equivalent of the same footage. We had one plan that showed those as being lots. In this plan, it's not. So I'm actually two lots shorter than what I talked to you about.
This change represents a reduction of ten units overall in the remaining portion that hasn't been built.
Yeah, of the whole, of the entire hundred and forty-eight. So, so you'll see the breakdown, forty twin homes and ninety-eight single family homes. The reduction was a little bigger than what I was even anticipating there. So that being said, that's what you see before you. And again, I'm happy to go through the, the history of the iterations if you wanna understand that. The next thing I just wanna point out is on the, on the clubhouse, right? We have the same clubhouse that we, that we just approved in our Antelope Meadows project. We wanna bring that to this site, make it bigger to meet the, that minimum square footage of 14, 1440 or something like that. And then this also has a better layout in terms of, there's a roll-up garage door on the backside that leads to the pool for a true party room between the interaction between the, the pool and, and the clubhouse, but also can be used in the, the wintertime. And then to get to what I think is really important in the conversation, that next picture is just the existing, which can be, it can be this, right? And then the next page of the single-family homes, right? That's, that's exactly what we're building in Bradley, is what we would do here in the, in the blue area. But where I wanna take that one step further is if you go to the next couple of iterations here and here, we're essentially taking those plans and we're creating a duplex unit with, with options. So in this particular case, it would be either a bump-out option instead of a third car or a true third car. Because these lots are so much wider than are needed, the twin home lots are so much wider than needed, we can actually incorporate those features into a twin home and act, and give a, an interesting perspective on the elevation where it's not just attached to the house. So it's kinda cool. And, and we think it would be cool to take existing, transition to a product like this, offer options to third cars, and then transition to the single-family.
So I have a question on the twin homes. Hold up the first page again.
What, is this going up?
No, no, this. What I wanna know is right here. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. There's eight brown lots right there. Does that represent eight doors, meaning four twin homes, or is that 16 doors?
No, no, no.
Because they're lot lines. I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. So each one is a side of a unit, right? So we're, we're just representing.
So there's two twin homes on the east side and two on the south side?
Yeah, so, so that block of eight is eight doors.
Eight doors. Two, four structures, four.
Yes, correct. And, and what we wanted to represent there, Jared, is just that the most important part of that to me, to Jason, right? To Fieldstone, is that we put a lot line down the middle so it can be for sale, right? It can be sold in the market. We, we all know that the, the single most important thing to, to wealth creation for anybody is the, is their home, is the number one thing. And so that, if I, if we did nothing else, which is an option here, right? And we kept everything exactly the same, just allow me to put a lot line down the middle. I don't wanna do that. Again, the product that is, is out there isn't, is, is the least desired in, in our feeling and, and long-term. And so we're looking for more.
Do those twin homes also have basements?
Yeah.
Yep. And I assume the single-family homes do also?
The newer, the new proposed ones, right? The old ones, do they have, the old ones don't have basements, right?
Well, the, the existing product does not have basements. Would we put them, would we use the same plan, right? Yes, and add basements, yes. What's really interesting is when you go down, you know, for footing depth because of frost, right? You're actually to, to add the basement square footage isn't that much more, but you get so much more in terms of livability for the, for the homes.
What are the square footages of both your single-family and your multifamily? Or ranges?
Range, I, I can get the, the exact numbers, but the range on would be between, I think it's 1,900 to, it's either 22 or 2,400 square feet finished is what we typically do.
For all of them, including the single-family?
For each of them, yes. So if, Colby, if we use the new kind of concept for the duplex plan, then it would, it would match. For, for the, the existing townhome plan, those are about, those would be about 1,200 to 1,400 square feet finished. So.
Question?
I'm gonna make, oh, go ahead.
Actually, if I may, I'd just like to just kinda make a statement and clarify a couple of things. I did reach out to Mr. Harris because he came and, and petitioned us as a council and said, I want to at least see if there's a willingness to entertain a change here. And so I did reach out to him and sat down with him and this other gentleman here, I forget your name, sir, so I apologize for that.
Rob.
The young man, Rob, who's very helpful. And I'm, I'm just, on the record, I wanna state that I'm not here to lobby for or against this project. I just wanted to make sure that he was heard and that, that we at least considered what he was offering. And this to me represents at least something new that we haven't seen in this area before and, and I think it's worthy of getting an opinion of my fellow councilmembers to see where they're at on it.
So not to put any pressure on you, but is it fair to assume that this is heading in a positive direction?
It's, this is headed in a direction for me that, that represents a much better outcome. I will say that, yes. But recognize, I recognize that's my opinion and my.
That's all we need to know. That's, that's it.
Well, and I, and I wanna recognize that as well because I, that's my opening statement was, you're, you know, all five opinions are important here and, and I'm happy to work through that. I really wanna do something better. I really do.
I guess I'd, I'd be interested to hear that argument because I do think the one thing we do lose is, my house, for example, is 1,900 square feet before I finished it. So.
It does what?
We're back, we're back up to a market, a market-priced house. We're talking over half a million dollars.
And I think that's the downside. I think that's the downside.
Is that, is that what we want?
I think that's the downside and that's the real question is, is, in my opinion, that's the real question is, there, there are several questions. I'm gonna be quiet and let you all talk about.
Well, and, and that's, that's where I was gonna go as well. And you asked a question I was going to ask, which is what are the size of these homes? And what is the price of these homes? And Jason, I, I assume that the twin home, even if it's the same size as the single-family home, would be priced maybe slightly less because you're sharing a lot to some.
That's correct.
To some regards. But I, I guess I would like to see that go a little bit further. I would like to have, I mean, if we're going to decrease the frontage and we're gonna do all of these things, I would like this to be a little bit more affordable product, like maybe have smaller homes on, on these twin home lots instead of houses with three-car garages. I, I would like to see, because that's what we're losing. We're losing an affordable product. And I'm really big on affordable homes that can be purchased. So I like that element of that.
Can you explain that to me? Because I wanna, don't get me wrong here. I wanna know how we're losing affordable product. We're losing a rental unit. These are owned. And then explain how we would.
These, these are a little bit more affordable product. They're not, they're not quite a single-family home on a single-family lot. They're not quite a townhome. They're kind of another little, smaller home that maybe somebody could afford to buy that feels a little bit like a single-family home, but isn't quite a single-family home.
You're talking about the brown ones or what?
Yes, the brown ones.
So you're asking them to make them smaller?
Yeah.
And in your mind, that makes them more affordable?
Yeah.
So if you had a comment, I, I'll wait.
You're trying to, you're trying to get me to make something?
No, no, no. I, I, you, I could see the wheels turning as well.
And I don't know if that makes sense. I mean, I'm, I'm pulled all over, I'm pulled all over the place on this.
No, I understand the premise. I don't know that, as counsel, I've said this many, many times, we've talked about affordable and whatnot. I don't feel that it's appropriate to manipulate price. And I'm, and I say that by taking us out of this and, and using New York. There are 600 square-foot studios that sell for $2 million. He can make it smaller. That doesn't force him to sell it for less. If people will pay that.
No, but, but it's a market. If you have one house sitting over here.
If we're in a crisis.
And one house sitting over here, the price of this one, the smaller, is gonna be less.
I find the median price of houses in our city are around 550 right now, according to data, regardless of the size. Some of them are 4,000, some of them are 2,000. They're all selling for 550.
Sure, you've got, you've got lot size, you've got finishes and things like that, but if you look at a graph here.
I'm not sure the size.
Size and the price of a home and lot size, they're, they're correlated.
And we don't have anything like, we don't have anything like what was originally in the plan. And that's, that's the hard, that's probably the hardest thing for me. You don't see me advocating for affordable housing very often. You're, I'm just gonna be honest.
Well, I'm saying market's gonna take care of itself, no matter what he builds. They're either gonna sell or they're not. They're gonna make them affordable.
And, and no matter, like you could build a cardboard box and it's gonna sell. Like that's today's market. Let's be honest.
So I don't know that I wanna stipulate my opinion.
Which I don't wanna diss.
Which I'm not saying you're gonna do. I'm just saying this is the reality of the situation that we're all in.
Yeah, so let me just make a quick comment there, right? And the, the, the question that you're posing here is, is a good one and it needs to be understood. But there, there is sort of a minimum when it comes to bedroom count, bathroom count, right? And you, and even there's, even as you shrink the home, right, just to get those in, because that's what you kinda need, right? In order to have something that feels livable to most people. The price per square foot, which I think is what you're getting at, it goes, it increases. So the value proposition actually goes down, even though you might have a, a slightly lower sales price, the value proposition both for livability and long-term wealth creation goes down with it. So we think, and we've proven it, right, through, through product, just like what was done in Bradley Farms, it actually is the affordable product for this market right now. It's unbelievable to me, and I know it to you too, that right now in new home construction, the new medium home price is 560,000. It's unbelievable. But that is it. That is the new. So it's tough, but we do think this is better. This is better.
Okay. Could, could I ask for maybe some follow-up correspondence?
Can I ask just one? I have one with a point.
Sure.
I don't understand why the other blue, single-family homes can't meet all of our RC standards. Our RC standards are our lowest standards as far as a single-family home is concerned. And I, and, and, okay, so I get the fact that this was planned and you've got certain roads going through there. So depth of that lot may, may create some problems if there was depth standards that were hard to meet, but I don't understand why average lot size can't be met with the RC, single-family homes.
I understand.
Can I, can I answer that? Because I, I wanna tell you what I talked about and, and explain to her. Because I, I agree that, I know you're, we're short on time, but as a body, we don't get to have this discussion and I wanna kinda let people know where we're at so that they don't give false feedback like what happened before. Then all of a sudden we're like, no, because, well, that's what council wanted. No, that's what one council wanted, right? So, so I wanna be able to say what I told him because I, I'm stickler on, okay, if it's RC, then meet the code. If in some area that we don't meet the, the minimum lot size, but we're close, am I willing to stipulate? The answer is yes, if you give me value back. So it's a give and take. So what I said is.
Say again?
What's the value back?
That, that's what I'm getting at. What I told him as my feedback was, if you want me to not meet the minimum square footage or, or the average square footage, then I want more amenity points, meaning more park amenities or more open space or more something. I don't, I'm not gonna tell them what it has to be. What I'm saying is if I'm giving up a code, you're giving up something as well. If, and then second point, if you're not meeting the total open space, well then how am I gonna, in my mind, compromise that? By you giving me something. So it's a trade-off. That's where I was at.
Okay, and, and I respect that. I, I think.
I don't know what the trade-off is.
I don't think that my, my, my calculus has changed because for me, it was either we get the affordable product or we meet the code. Neither one of those are still being met. And that's the.
So, so agree. I, I said meet the code or give me a reason to stipulate.
Right. And so that, I mean, I, I'm kinda making that same calculus. I guess my thought would be, I, I was still, I, I mean, Mr. Peterson wasn't necessarily listening, but I, I was always at least in favor of just doing a straight-up lot split and calling that good because at least there's homeownership. I would still be in favor of doing that. I don't know that I would go any further. That's my feedback.
That's great. I think, I appreciate the feedback.
My, my feedback would be that I'm okay with what you're proposing here, except for the minimum lot size. I, I live on one of these small lots. My neighbors live on these small lots. We have a ton of turnover. We've got people that can't fit, you know, a trampoline, a swing set. They can't fit anything in their backyard.
Would you stipulate that if they put a trampoline and a swing set in the open space? You see what I'm saying?
I would, no, I, I don't think it's enough.
You have to have the minimums, even if he adds amenities.
Yeah, in that, in my mind, yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Burnham, anything you wanna add before we wrap up?
I think it's going in a positive direction, but I too have those same concerns about affordability. And that's, that's a struggle for me, but I also think that you could mix in, in the single-family, some smaller houses that maybe would sell for a little less to, to meet that need instead of having all of them be like that. Does that make sense? Am I, I don't know if I'm making sense, but anyway. I do, I do like the look.
Just a thought though. I don't know that they're doing specs. They may be selling them. And it may be whatever someone picks as their home for that lot.
True. So a lot of them will say, we're doing this, this house on this lot or whatever.
Yeah, this, I'm picking this house. I'm picking this lot. Yeah, so.
Can I just make a suggestion to Councilmember Burnham and Love? I'm just, it's just an idea that, that I haven't discussed with Mr. Harris or anybody else, frankly. The affordability is obviously an issue. And I let him know that I thought that would be a concern from my fellow councilmembers and it's a concern that I have. I, I wonder if there's not an opportunity to produce some of these, even if they're the twin homes, with an ADU as part of the, the floor plan so that it creates an additional dwelling unit that, that could maybe be rented. I'm just gonna throw that out there. I, I know that's out of left field for you.
That's left, left field, but I would be.
But I'm pretty good at being in, out of left field.
You've brought me back to the table.
Just so you know, he and I had that conversation as well and I, I had that same. Did you talk about that?
Yeah, oh, yeah. Because that's exactly what I said to create more.
I'll, I'll support that anytime, any day.
Yep. I'd, I'd definitely be interested in looking at that.
So, so just, I, I'm not sure I heard completely. Like, offer ADUs in the product type? Is that what I heard?
There's an option.
So you could, for example, make the lot a little bit bigger and put two units on there?
So that, so that there's at least an option, right? Because I'm gonna tell you what I'm interested in, why this is interesting to me. Because what I'm not interested in doing is creating a bunch more rental units. I own rental units. I take care of rental units. And I'm not saying that they're a bad thing, but there's, there's a different element associated with rentals than with homeowners. I'm interested in seeing what we can do to get homeowners in this area so that there's a buy-in to the city and we elevate.
And there's some creative financing going on in there.
And there's that opportunity for those individuals to get into an ADU where they might have someone who helps support the mortgage.
Right, so basically you sell both units to the same person and they can rent it out as an ADU.
I think that is currently not legal.
That's not legal?
No, this is saying, I buy the twin home and the upstairs is mine. I'm gonna finish the basement. That's why I asked about a basement. I'm gonna let my kids live in it or your kids.
So the floor plan accommodates that.
Yeah, they have multifamily basement entrance.
So it doesn't change, it doesn't require that?
No.
Okay.
They're gonna finish the basement.
That's not what I understood, so.
All right, all right. So any, any other clarifications you need before we?
Yeah, yeah, ma, maybe just two, right? So I wanna address yours, Carolyn, which is, you, you were asking about it, like, can't you just, you know, go a little bigger, right? Like meet all of the requirements to get to the, to, to that square footage requirement, right? And the, the answer is no. Like I, we ran, if I had time to give you all the scenarios, we'd give them all to you, but we ran all the scenarios. And, and there is a breaking point between just doing the rental product, right, from an economic standpoint. It's, it's a math equation and we ran the math equation. Losing 10 lots out of this deal is significant, right? If you, in terms of all of us are, are working a business or a business owners, when you lose revenue, right? In this case, $5 million worth of revenue, you will lose, right, that capture. So, so there, there just is a point. And I'm saying, we came to you with our best idea because we don't have much time and that's the point. So, so there, there just is a point, and I'm saying, we came to you with our best idea, because we don't have much time, and that's the point. And then, to the ADU, um, we're doing a whole subdivision in Saratoga Springs right now. We will offer ADUs in every one of, uh, as an option in every one of the plans. We're happy to do that here, we, I personally have an ADU in my own home, um, and I've had it for twelve years, when it was illegal. But now, all of a sudden, it's okay, right? The seventy-year-old woman that's been living with me for you, for, for, for the last, uh, five years, actually, she can come out of the basement. So, uh, she's really happy about the sunrise. So, uh, that is, absolutely, we're, we're here, we want to do those things, we are doing those things, and, and the plan that we're offering here, I'm asking, right, like, tell me to come do this, and we will. That's, that's what I'm here to do. I, I heard some positive feedback, I think we're close. So, i- is that fair for me to say, like, if we make application? I think our next step, Steve and I talked about, would be, we'd make another, uh, and, um, application to the MDA, to amendment to the MDA, and then we incorporate these components into it. I think that's our next step. Do, do you agree? Do you want me here? If you don't, just tell me, because I, I'm busy.
I mean, I'll, I'll speak up, Jason, because I reached out to you, I, 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 I would be in favor of seeing something like this being developed here, versus what you're vested with.
Thank you. Same? Any objections?
I, I would be, no, yeah, but.
Okay.
I, I can count, so, and I, I, and I will be kind.
That's what I want, I just wanna know, right?
Yeah.
So, okay.
All right.
I'm not thrilled about the, the lot size, but I'd probably plug my nose and vote for it.
It'll be better, I, I promise. Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we do have a closed, okay, we, we, we do need to get to a closed session. So, uh, uh, we, we really need to make good use of the next twenty minutes. Uh, I'd like to give opportunity for, uh, Mr. Mumford to introduce some of our new, uh, new players on the team.
Thank you, Mayor. So, we just hired several planners recently, thank you, Council, by the way, for allowing us to do that. I've had several developers reach out, asking, have you hired anyone yet? So, uh, you may have seen Todd Black, he left the meeting early, he was backed by Brad there, on the chair. He was our, he's our wildlife biologist, if you haven't had a chance to meet him, um, you will, I'm sure, in the, in the coming days. Wildlife biologist and environmental planner, he's been, uh, crucial with kinda special projects, and then our, our key point person, talking with Camp Williams on open space preservation and conservation easements, as well as working with the Nature and Wildlife Alliance, and, um, reviewing projects for environmental concerns and steep slopes and other things. We just hired, let's see, uh, two or three weeks ago, right, Jed, Jed Shum there, um, is a Planner One, new to the team, very excited to be on board. Steven Lemmons, uh, next to him, was hired just a week later, and, um, he's a Planner One as well. So, Jed is, has a degree, a planning degree from BYU, and then he's, um, currently finishing up his Masters in Urban Design at the University of Utah. And Steven has a degree, a planning degree from BYU as, as well, uh, several years ago, right? Finished up several years ago. And then, um, David Stroud, we just hired as a Senior Planner, joined the team. He's, he has twenty-five years' experience in planning, um, yeah, Orem City, Saratoga Springs, and then several, uh, places outside of, of the state as well, um, if I remember correctly. But, um, happy to have them join the team. Obviously, Rob, you know, Rob Hobbs, and, um, he'll be out for a bit, dealing with some family matters, so if you do have concerns or questions on projects, you can send those to me, or, um, one of our team there. Dave's kind of the main point person for right now, and, um, but the others, the other guys are getting on board, and, and excited to, um, to make some progress with our, with our team here, so.
Great, well, welcome, gentlemen, uh, look forward to, uh, great times.
Would it be appropriate to give him a hand, I'm so grateful that.
Yeah, let's do it.
Thanks, you, gentlemen, and welcome.
And thank you for being here, too.
Does someone wanna roll out the list of projects?
No, 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 no.
Do we need all hands on deck to pull it out here?
Give them a chance, yeah, to get their feet under them, yeah, then we'll.
No promises as of timelines on getting, getting these projects done, but we do have a long list of projects, and, um, if, if we're not getting to your projects, please let me know, and, and we'll work on those as quickly as possible.
Great, okay, thank you, Steve, and thank you to all. All right, let's go to our consent agenda, see if we can get through that. So, stop me if you have questions. So, eleven A, uh, a commercial lease agreement between Eagle Mountain and Star West Eagle Mountain Properties LLC. Questions on that one? Twelve A and B are bid awards, uh, A is twenty-twenty-two Eagle Mountain Concrete Collar Replacement, Precision Manholes. Twelve B is, yes.
I have a question on that one, they're, they're brand-new manholes, right? Can we hold the original contractor responsible for not installing those up to snuff?
All right, here's your man coming up here.
These, these are not new manholes.
Oh, these are like?
No, and, and there's a map, should be a map supplied with details on them. The vast majority of them are on Pony Express Parkway, and they're replacement ones, um, that have been long in need for, like, water valves and stuff, but we haven't had the road widened, in order to do that work.
So, it, it feels like they're lower now, is that just because the road was widened and work was done, and now they're lower?
Well, and, and some of them have been low for years.
Okay.
Right, but now that we have a wider road, it's gonna be easier to go in and take a lane, and do those repairs, where before, we would have been, happened to the flag, and.
So, these, this was not caused by the widening?
They're, they're, no, they're, they're all on Pony Express with a few water valves that deal with water breaks. One of them being right out front here, um, that dealt with, uh, when we paved, we leave them low, and then bring them up, so.
They're, they're all just, they're routine maintenance, with valves that are years old.
That makes sense. What did you expect this to come in at, as far as a bid award?
Uh, those all, all look normal, um.
This is what you expected, because we only got one bid?
Yeah, uh, I, I am actually more concerned that right now, there's a shortage with concrete.
Right, okay.
Um, and, and considering that, um, the prices look pretty good. The company, it was, uh, uh, only one bid came in, um, but that company, we, we've used them for manholes for several years. I mean, that's, this is all they do, is manholes, so they're very familiar with the work, so.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Great, thank you, Jack.
Any other questions?
Any questions?
Fair enough.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's see, where are we? Twelve B, Cory, uh, Cory Ride Memorial Park, Pony Express Booster Pumps, Vancom Inc. Questions on that one? Okay, all right, uh, some bond releases, thirteen A, Eagle Mountain, Eagle Point, Phase J Plot One, out of warranty. Thirteen B, The Towns at Riley Farms, uh, Phase B Plot One, out of warranty. Change orders, Cory Ride Memorial Park, Phase Two, Change Order Number Four, Kenny Sang Construction. Fifteen A is the minutes from May seventeenth.
On page one of the minutes, it says that the meeting started at five o'clock. Did we really start the meeting at five o'clock? I don't remember having, if we had a delay, I don't remember it being that long. I think that may, I, maybe that's a typo.
I can look at that and see.
I don't know if we started right at four, but I don't think we started at five, I think I remember that.
What page is it, did you say on that?
I think it's page one, like, right in the middle of the page, is what I've written down.
I'll, I'll check the time, I can do that easily and fix it.
It says the Mayor Pro Tem called the meeting to order at five PM.
It's very important, I think that it, it reflects poorly on me as Mayor Pro Tem. So if you could take care of that, I would appreciate it, okay.
Hey, I think it reflects good, it means we were waiting that long for the mayor, and you finally took over.
That is not true. Tell them how you look at it.
Okay, a- any other changes needed on that? All right, uh, sixteen A is Resolution of Eagle Mountain, uh, naming Fire Station Two-Fifty-One the Sweetwater Fire Station. Would it get there? All right, okay, that is our, that's our consent items, um.
Can we stop going to make all consent agenda, is that easy to get through?
I wish, I wish.
Mayor, we can certainly, um, move or continue till six fifteen, if you wanna go through the other items.
Until six fifteen? Okay, I'm a little confused, but, all right, whatever you say.
I, I think we'll have sufficient time if we, if we just finish this, and, um, then go into the closed session.
Okay, all right, very good, we'll do that. So, um, yeah, rarely do I get told to slow down, now that's, now I'm confused, okay. Seventeen, yeah, seventeen A, um, is, uh, is, is a public hearing item, in Orange, Eagle Mountain City, Utah, adopting fiscal year, uh, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, annual budget discussion item only. So, not an action item, so. Is, is Kimberly on, oh, yep, there you are. Kimberly, we'll turn time over to you.
Kimberly, we're just checking the audio, can you hear us?
We are not hearing anything, Kimberly. And it looks like, at least from my screen, it looks like you're muted, I don't know.
Kimberly, if you log out and then come back in, maybe that will reset your microphone. Tyler, will you check your microphone to see if it's working?
And just a note, Mayor, we do, we do have some of the information for budget changes that she sent to me and Paul just before the meeting, so just in case she's not able to get on.
I think, I think Finn sent it to each of us, at least. That's it, right?
Yeah. Tyler, or Kimberly, can you try, I've just changed the setting on my side to see if, is there any difference?
I'm, I'm going to log out, Mayor, and back in and see if that will work. Tyler and Kimberly, stand by, I'm just gonna log out. They can't hear, yeah.
Joining the meeting.
Tyler or Kimberly, can you check your microphones now and see if they're working?
Yeah.
Yeah, I suppose we could, uh, just to make good use of the time. So, uh, while, uh, staff and Kimberly are working on the, uh, the microphone situation, let's go ahead and go to Item Seventeen B, which is also a public hearing, in ordinance of Eagle Mountain rezoning certain lands known as Mochila Technology Park. And, uh, Steve, do you have that for us?
I do have that. Finn, are you able to just swap, I know you're working with them on, trying to get them on, but, if you can swap the PowerPoint. This is approximately a hundred and twenty acres on the southwest part of town, southwest of the Facebook site, and just south of, uh, the project that was recently approved for the RTI overlay. Current zoning is agriculture, the general plan, future land use map designation is business park, light industry. You can see that, well, you can see that coming up in one of the slides, but this is the location, the Mochila Technology Park. You can see the RTI overlay areas in blue, Fairfield City to the west. The rezone criteria are listed in your staff report, this is generally what we look at, and review with rezones, compliance with the general plan, compatibility determination with surrounding land uses, city services, the impact of the, of the project on city services, traffic generation, and then property values. So this is the future land use map, and the existing transportation, uh, master plan as well. You can see the property there, kind of outlined in yellow shading. It does have a future, uh, what's designated as a freeway facility that runs through the property, and a collector road on the east, um, and arterial on the south. This also shows our existing plan to the, on the left, and our draft plan on the right, which may change until the, the council sees that, should be presented to you at a, at a meeting in the very near future. But we, you can see on the right, we've added in a collector road, a minor collector on the north side as well, that's an east-west collector. Planning Commission on May tenth voted four to zero to recommend approval of the rezone with no changes. One commissioner was excused, Commissioner Wells, I believe, wasn't available for that meeting. Any, any questions on this project?
Questions for Steve?
What, what are the, uh, have they indicated an, an intention to use this in any particular way?
So, the conceptual uses that they've discussed, um, is potentially data center use, but they're also looking at a solar project as well. May or may not be on the property, some of it might be on the property, they have other properties, um, in town that they're looking at, and out of town, to the south and west, that potentially could have solar as well.
And then how would that, how would the process with the freeway be handled? Just because this process is different from other processes we follow? How would that, how would that be dealt with?
You're saying if this is an RTI project, if, if they end up going through the RTI site plan approval process? If our transportation master plan still has a freeway going through there, then we require dedication or, or, um, preservation of space for that? We would not approve a site plan on top of that, unless the council approves a master transportation plan amendment that moves that. We've, we've worked in the past with properties to shift just slightly, because it's a crayon line on the map, right? But, um, yeah, we would definitely work with the council to amend that plan first. So if, for instance, if they came in with a project on the east side of the property that did not impact that, we could approve that, that site plan on the east portion. But we have not, if I recall, I don't believe there's been a conceptual plan submitted for this project, like there was for the project to the north. At least for this property. We've seen conceptual plans from the applicant before for other properties, but not for this project.
I believe that in the, the notes it said that there was a JSON property that wants a fence. Is that just, is, I know that between residential and commercial, that's kind of a given. Is that a given between this and agriculture?
Yes, they're, they're concerned about their agricultural use, right? Their cattle or, or livestock getting off of their own property and onto a, a data center property or somewhere, an industrial property and getting, causing trouble, right? So yes, I have to look at the fencing standards again to make sure. But I assume that, number one, I guess assumptions are, don't get this anywhere, but Facebook put a, put a fence all the way around their project with the intent of preserving, right? Protecting their own property. So we'll definitely look at that as part of the project and I'll, I'll make sure we look at the, of course, the code is, is part of that. Any other questions?
Not seeing anything. Okay, thank you, Steve. Finn, how are we doing on the microphone side of things?
Kimberly, will you try now and see if?
Mayor, Council, this is Kimberly. Can you hear me?
There you are.
So I, I apologize. I know it's always difficult to do this when we're, well, for me it is anyway. It's always difficult when I'm not physically present. So I appreciate your patience with me as I'm getting some updates on the new government accounting standards. So tonight, we had a few items that had been reviewed since we had last met to be considered with tonight's public hearing for them. I asked Finn if she would kind of send that list out to you. I didn't want to have to try to share and stream across it in case that impacted the connectivity of what we had available to us. So I'll, I'll try to quickly kind of go through some of these. We can, I, I know you guys have some other business to get to before the, the main meeting, but we'll jump through them as quickly as we can. So there's a request I've got in there for $2,000 to add to the finance budget. It is to cover some additional costs related to the filings that we do for, there's three different award programs we participate in related to our budget award, our, our annual comprehensive financial plan and the popular annual financial report that we do. And as our population increases, our submission fees with that increase as well. So we've added a little bit of funding in for that, which is only a few hundred extra dollars. And then I am asking for some additional funding that can be used for training employees and having them participate in training programs related to our primary software we have, which is Springbrook Software. So that's what that request is on that particular funding there. The water department has requested an additional project related to the air conditioning units for the wellhouse cooling. It would be to retrofit all of the existing wellhouses. The estimated total cost to do all of that is $250,000. The next item is related to computer electronic equipment for new hires. So we've got these positions and staff that have been approved in there and meeting with Aaron about what the average cost is to outfit with potential computers, monitors, telephones. The equipment does vary depending on the type of position, but this is the placeholder requested to fund equipment needs for those new hires that have been approved in the budget. The next IT item was, I think you guys received the detailed background for that in an email for you. It's relating some infrastructure upgrading for our server as well as wiring. And then in the public safety departments, a small amount for an increase there. The animal, the Northern Utah Animal Shelter, there was a board meeting held at the end of May and we received our population estimate for, based on their budget, and it's slightly up above what we had originally estimated. So we originally estimated around $30,000 and our allotment's going to be the 3,000 or 3,100, I guess I can't say that right. It's an additional $1,284 for that. The next few items are all related to the wastewater division. So we have a reduction in costs related to the tipping fees that we have there and then an increased cost to do some maintenance. So this, this $46,000 request here is to be able to rent some equipment that allows them to do the inspections that are needed on the sewer pipes. And it is, again, part of our state compliance to be able to review and inspect that. And this is the information that MAC is requesting for us to be able to accomplish that this next year. An additional $65,000, we've talked about this item a little bit, but we haven't had a placeholder in terms of an estimated cost. This is the thirteen acres of land where they are going to actually put some seed in, grow some agriculture, and it is, then the irrigation goes into it that has to do with the replenishment and the, and the, the water related to the wastewater treatment plant. The additional $100,000 request for the wastewater is specifically related to design work. There is a current placeholder for $25,000 in there to go towards that. The estimates that we were receiving is that for the, the design work for a future expansion of the treatment plant may cost us more, around $125,000. So this estimate is, is to increase the funding for that. The actual cost of that, obviously, it would be a contract that would be levied, come back to the council, and only the amount for the actual service is what would go out. So even though the funding is estimated $125,000, if the design work is less than that, that additional money would not be spent. And then the $34,000 related to the wildlife and environmental projects. That as well was a list that went out to the council for you guys to review in advance so that you'd have that information in my absence. Again, all the items that were there would be items that would be funded, managed, maintained by Eagle Mountain City. There had been some discussion too about some contributions and things like that. At this point, the items requested in the budget would just be for city funding. Those are the items that I have outlined since our last discussion. So if you have any questions or more detail that you'd like me to go into on that, I'd be happy to.
Questions for Kimberly, Councilmember Love?
I apologize because I know we talked about this last time and I don't remember what the answer was. There was the idea of going back to shared vehicles. That, that with COVID, we'd gone to more of a single employee per vehicle. Can you tell me where we're at with that and if that might affect the, the trucks that need to be purchased?
Yes, I, I believe we did have Jeff at the last meeting kind of went over this. The, the item, the vehicles that are being requested are for existing new hires and that the, what we considered the COVID vehicles, vehicles that we had bought during COVID to separate people, those have already been picked up and reused in the fleet. So we don't have any extra vehicles from that standpoint to be able to utilize. And that in anywhere possible, job sharing is occurring. So several of these positions are inspector positions that do require, you know, an individual person to be in the vehicle as well as some of the other assignments. So Jeff did meet with each of the departments to go over the positions that were requested and what their individual needs were. And at this time, and I can go back and look at my list, but the number of vehicles that we are purchasing would be single user vehicles and they were specific based on those department needs.
No, I, thanks, thanks, Kimberly. I, as soon as you said that, I remembered hearing it before, so.
Any other questions? Councilmember Gray, got anything? Councilmember Burnham? Councilmember Curtis? Okay. All right. Well, thank you, Kimberly. Well done. Okay, with that, yeah, I will call for a motion for closed session. And it is, just so we're accurate here. Yeah, it is a reasonably imminent, imminent litigation and purchase of real estate properties.
Mayor, I, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn to a closed session to discuss. Yeah, I just lost my, reasonable or imminent, purchase of property, that's what it's for. And, and litigation.
I, I, that probably works, yeah.
I'll second that.
Go to that thing where we, where we have.
Litigation or property, that's the two things we're going to talk about.
Yeah, so we have a motion by Councilman Gray, second by Councilmember Wright. Let's just go down.
Here it is.
Councilmember Curtis.
Yes.
Councilmember Burnham.
Yes.
Councilmember Love.
Yes.
Councilmember Wright.
Yes.
Councilmember Gray.
Yes.
All right, we are adjourned. It's seven minutes after six PM. We're adjourned until, Paul? Indeed grateful for, and pray in the name of Jesus Christ. Everyone, oh, no, well, before we get started, so it is now, let's see, nine minutes after seven PM, June seventh, 2022. This is Eagle Mountain City Council Policy Session. And if everyone will please rise, Councilmember Curtis will lead us in the Pledge of Oligies.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Bear with me just a moment while I pull up our information items. Oh, wrong file. Looking in the wrong place. Well, I thought I had it. Okay. Thank you to everyone who attended Pony Express Days. This year's festival was yet another great success. Whether you were a vendor or you patronized the events, Eagle Mountain City extends a warm thank you and looks forward to hosting you at more events throughout the summer. Eagle Mountain City is encouraging residents to water their lawns twice per week, starting this week. Residents with odd numbered addresses are encouraged to choose their watering days from Monday, Wednesday, or Friday. Even numbered addresses are encouraged to choose Tuesday, Thursday, or Saturday. Help the city achieve its conservation and water management goals. Also, June ninth through the eleventh is, is rodeo. So if you have not attended or purchased your tickets, please do so. It's a, it's a great event. Eagle Mountain Symphony is, will be performing on, on June tenth. You can get more information on their website, eaglemountainsymphony.org, I believe. And to receive city notifications, including emergency info, news, events, and traffic alerts, sign up at emcity.org/notify-me. Okay, we will now take time for public comments. I have, so we'll open up public comment at twelve minutes after seven PM. And this is, this time is set aside for anyone that would like to speak on anything that is not a public hearing item on our agenda. So there are forms in the back. So we have, so right now, we'll open up the public comment time at seven twelve. And I have a form from Chad Welch.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Chad Welch. I represent the Eagle Mountain Nature and Wildlife Alliance. I'm the vice president. We were recently incorporated as a five oh one C three. And I'd just like to read a letter that was already sent to you. Appreciate the positive responses we've already received on that, but just want to read, read it as part of a public comment. Dear Mayor and City Council Members, we have realized for some time now our historic wildlife corridor overlay zone needs further refinement and amending. It is important for the city to do this in an expeditious manner because the development of critical lands within the corridor is accelerating. As we understand it, applications for development or amendments to previously approved plats will be governed by whatever version of the subject code is in place at the time the zone is officially placed on any property. We now have subdivisions to which the overlay zone has been applied and the problems with the vagaries and oversights of the original code are becoming more apparent. We have recently seen irreversible destruction take place in areas of development that according to preliminary plat and commitments made by the developer should have been protected. If we truly care about our native wildlife and habitat, we must act with urgency to prevent this from occurring again. In addition, we respectfully request that members of the alliance be included in the discussions on amending this overlay zone. The Eagle Mountain Nature and Wildlife Alliance has dedicated hours of work and research into formulating the currently, the current overlay zone. With Pete Kane, Taylor Jensen, and Shane Hill no longer available to assist in this endeavor, we members of the Eagle Mountain Nature and Wildlife Alliance have more knowledge and experience with this overlay and the background behind it than anyone else who could contribute. We would be a great asset in helping the city staff, the planning commission, and the city council to amend the current wildlife overlay zone. We respectfully request you act quickly as possible within the scope of your authority to begin the amendment of the overlay zone of which we have been so proud and place this, put the, put this on the future city council agenda. And we appreciate that. Sincerely, the Eagle Mountain Nature and Wildlife Zone.
Thank you, Chad.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Finn, is there anyone else that?
I don't have anything else, Mayor.
Am I on the agenda, Jill Jones?
If you wanted to make a public comment, yes, go ahead, Jill. You have three minutes.
Can you give us your name and address, please?
Yes, Jill Jones, three six two two North Lark Grove in Eagle Mountain, eight four oh oh five. Anyways, the seniors did a real good bang up job at the vendor spot on the corner. We sold a lot of cookies, mine selling the most. And I'm awfully proud of the senior center over there with Joy and Jack. They've done a good job with the net and Bill and everybody. And so the seniors and our little kiddies over there at Cedar Valley have to go swimming clear down to Lehigh at the Legacy. And so I proposed, and it's on record, that we do the, as with the wildlife, conservation. I proposed, and it's on record, that we have a waiting pool where the asbestos-ridden fire old station is right next to the senior center. And that way, we don't have a bond measure for people. We don't have to collect property tax money from it. We just collect it as a conservation place with a fountain there for eagles. And have you seen eagles flying around there? Yes. And so it's kind of marshy and that fire station is sinking down in the topography there. So I would like to propose that there be, without the taxpayer burden or a bond measure, that to be cleared a conservatory place, a marshland, wetland, have you, with the federal monies funding it. Two days a week, just charge people $5 on a Tuesday and Thursday. Maybe next summer when we don't have a lifeguard shortage.
Thank you.
Oh, and there's no trash can at the place where I've been picking up dog poop. Oh, and there's no trash can at the place where I've been picking up dog poop, which is off Shadow Rock, Shadow Rock and, um, where it says Narwhal there, behind my house on Lark, you can find that little park there, there's no trash can, I'm sure it's just an oversight.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, uh, with that, we will close public comment at 7:17 and turn time over to, uh, council members. Uh, Councilmember Gray, can we start with you?
Sure. Uh, items that I had for today, especially, and I'm glad I get to go first for a change, Pony Express Days was awesome. Uh, I was out of town for a lot of it, some of the other events, but our, our event staff and our entire staff, in, in more ways than one, is really incredible, and, uh, I think this is a special time to shine on the event staff too, that, uh, and parks, by the way, that's where we have all these events. Um, so good job to, to everybody that was involved in Pony Express Days. Uh, with that, as a liaison assignment, which I'm always very cautious on how I address this, the Derby, and I do want to maybe take some time at a different time to update how Pony Express Events operates possibly and, uh, and some of the, uh, status, if you will, of where, how that's going, but, uh, the Derby was a sellout, there was three rollovers, which in Derby language means that's really, really good, because there's usually none, that means there's hard hits and, uh, it was, uh, it was great. Uh, I, I'm not a Derby guy, I don't know anything about it, but I'm telling you, that means it was good. Uh, standing room only, uh, I think the, the report on that was incredible, uh, I think the crowd enjoyed it, uh, windy, like every year, the, we, the wind blew, and as you mentioned, the, I, I, just as a plug for the rodeo, I know you already mentioned this, uh, every night's a different night, so if you have tickets, I just wanted to highlight a couple things because I actually know some of the, the, the things go, um, Thursday night, if you're a BYU fan, there might be a celebrity appearance, um.
That's probably a teaser.
Any hints? You can give us a hint there? He might have been a coach and he might have retired.
Okay, all right.
And, uh, and he, and he might be entered.
Oh, really?
So, uh, yeah, I'm working on a, it's not 100% finalized, so I don't want to, I don't want to say too much, but I, but I'll say this, Bronco Mendenhall might be entered in the team roping.
Okay.
All right, so, uh, kind of cool little situation there, um, Friday night is, this is the one that I really wanted to, to highlight, uh, I don't know much about it, my committee did this, and I, and I have no idea what's going on, but they're honoring the, the police and fire, uh, I, I can't remember what they called it, uh, shoot, you just told me what? Public, it is a public safety, uh, something, and it's gonna be neat, there might be a, uh, sheriffs versus, uh, unified fire calf roping type activity. Oh, I was, and back to Thursday, Mascot Miracles comes on Thursday, uh, they're gonna do a rug race where we're gonna try to kill some mascots, they're gonna get drugged by a horse, I, it's terrible. So, um, but that's the only night of that, Friday, of course, with the, those other things, and then Saturday's our Patriot Night, where, uh, the armed forces, so that's, uh, there's going to be a, a new treat every, every night, so I just wanted to kind of get that out there so people can know, maybe there's something they want to see, if there's just one night they can come, but, uh, excited to see some of that, and, and I'll save the rest for later.
Cool, okay, Councilmember Wright.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I would just, uh, I would, I would absolutely endorse everything that Councilmember Gray has said, and I want to, I, I do want to give a specific shout-out to the, to the Eagle Mountain Nature and Wildlife Alliance, I'm grateful for the work that they've done and helping to, to kind of recognize and draft some of the code language that we've, uh, that's been adopted by the city council regarding wildlife overlay, that's important to me, and just encourage them to continue to work, work with the staff, specifically with Mr. Black, as he's, uh, kind of the liaison there, and, and absolutely look forward to your input and insights there, and, and pledge my support to, to help make sure that that continues to function in a good way. Um, and I think very specifically we should, we should shout out to Dawn and Suzie, uh, you know, everyone who played a part in that, on the city staff, but those two, I think, deserve special props, and I want to recognize them for the work that they did in, in relationship to Pony Express Days. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Councilmember Love?
Uh, yeah, that, that's what's on my list as well, is thanking the staff for all of their work on Pony Express Days, um, it was fun to be a part of it again this year, it's always a highlight for my family, and hopefully it's a highlight for everyone within the city, um, for their families, and that this can become a great tradition for our residents. Um, and then also Pony Express Events, we went to the demolition derby, um, second year now, and it's become quite the tradition for our family, we, we love it. Um, and then just a plug for the upcoming rodeo, um, it should be great. And also, yes, to the Wildlife Alliance, I'm, we've lost some people that have worked with you on that, but I love the fact that we have a dedicated person now that can help with that, so hopefully that can continue to go on the way that it should so that we get what we need, um, drafted and we're able to protect our wildlife and our watches.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yep, uh, I don't have any business, but I do have a joke.
Oh, joke, okay.
What's worse than finding a worm in your apple after you bite into it?
Oh, I know this one.
What's worse than that?
What's worse than finding half a worm? So that's your joke. Okay, I'll give you one more. What, what did Shakespeare's stable hand say to him before going riding? To ride or not to ride, that is Equestrian. Terrible dad jokes, I'm here all week.
All right, okay, very good, thank you for that. Okay, Councilmember Burnham?
Okay, so, um, once a month, we give out, um, they're called, let's see, I'm all through Eagle Mountain Coins. Rec, yeah, and it's a resident recognition for a resident who just exemplifies Eagle Mountain and what we're about, and, um, we've given these to a lot of really amazing people, and typically, we, we don't select staff members, but this time, we're doing this back. And he doesn't know. In fact, he, he told me, my wife is here today, my family's here, it's, they just, just showed up.
They're, they're just concerned about him.
Yeah, they're, they're just, they're just very concerned about Paul, but anyway, I wanted to honor Paul because, not, not because he's a good city administrator, but because he goes above and beyond, and Paul's gonna get pretty emotional here because he's already had a really emotional day, so just forgive him, and if, um, he, he is the kind of city administrator that, for example, when we had a problem with a big bump in the road that, um, was causing issues at night, he, um, went out and directed traffic, when there were school issues, he went out and directed traffic, when, um, um, when we had the tragic accident, he was on site. Um, it's just, just the, the, the kind of, um, city administrator he is, the kind of person that he is, and so, um, it, it has been a crazy two weeks, and so I, I didn't reach out to staff super early, Steve helped me and, and we, we reached out to some staff, and I have a few, um, letters from staff that I, that I wanted to read, and they're just really short, um, from Angela, she said, "One year, he came as Batman, the photo of him on his desk was rescuing a baby bird that was caught in the ceiling in his office. There is the countless stories of him doing traffic control for hours after a school event, car accident, et cetera, so much so that the sheriffs gave him a junior deputy "One time on April Fools, I brought in Oreos and scraped out the white part and filled it with peppermint toothpaste, he ate about four before we could stop him, then asked if they were left over from Christmas." That shows how much he loves sweets, though not necessarily how dedicated he is to the city, um, but, yeah, she does, I don't know what, I didn't, oh, there's, there's a picture of Paul rescuing, sorry, I didn't know the pictures were attached, or I would have included those. Um, Jason Hall, "I would like to express my appreciation for all the hard work, long hours, and late nights you put in for us employees in the city, I would like to know that none of, you to know that none of this is gone unnoticed by any of us, and we are grateful for your kindness, loyalty, and commitment." And then he says, "Go Bears."
That's a slam. That's a slam.
I'm sorry, Paul, I should have left that part out, I didn't know what that meant. Okay, this is, this is from Mac, "I've been fortunate enough to know Paul for about 15 years, Paul seems to always have a smile on his face, I watched Paul transition into EFO's position without skipping a beat, Paul has been a strong mentor to me as I continue to move down this career path, not every day is sunshine and roses, I've had to go through some difficult times, and he was there supporting me the whole way, he has a great character, honest, trustworthy, and anyone would be lucky to call him a friend or supervisor." We often joke about Paul that he can't lie. Okay, um, this is from Brad Hittgen, "I've spent several years working with Paul and have always respected him as a friend, teammate, and person, and person, I've always admired his ability to have open and considerate conversations with staff, it is really hard to find dedicated individuals, and we have a gem in Paul. I know he will spend as many hours as needed to work through or resolve any issue, and gives a lot of his time to his job, faith, and community, he's a good representative for the city, and I'm glad I get to call him my friend and work with him on a daily basis." This one's from Michelle Graves, and this was a memory that she had, um, she said, "Over the years, when asking admin for budget items, I've often heard no," that was it, "no real explanations, just no." "When Paul started and was working with me regarding budget items, instead of a no, and continuing on, he spent the time to educate me on the why of his no. I've worked for the city for 22 years, and he was the only person who took the time to treat me with respect and consideration to explain the reason. I've appreciated that more than anything, it didn't take long, and I still wasn't happy about the no, but I understood the why, and it helped. He is always like that, and I think it's a super trait." This is, um, okay, these, these stories, I, this, this story, this is from Evan, and I love this story because it tells so much about Paul, some of it funny, but you'll get what I mean. "I think Paul's experience with a scammer is a perfect example of who he is." A scam, sorry, "A scammer called him while he was in the office a few years ago, and instead of just hanging up and moving on, Paul goes above and beyond, like always, and returns their call to harass them back. He calls again and again and again until they plead with him to stop calling. They admitted to him that they were scammers, and he asked them why they were scamming. That's when the other side of Paul kicked in, the part where he really does care about people and their needs, no matter who they are. The scammer on the call confessed that he scams people because he has no other skills or resources to do anything else. Paul then counsels the scammer and ends the call, having hopefully given the scammer some resolve to better themselves. Despite the impossible nature of the task, I've seen Paul do everything he can to help everyone he can, at times with significant personal sacrifice, he's a great role model for public servants." And this one's from Steve Mumford, who's our Assistant City Administrator. "Paul and I were hired at Eagle Mountain City on the same day almost 15 years ago, he is one of the most honest, respectful, hardworking, and caring people that I've had the pleasure to work with. He stepped into EFO shoes in an admirable fashion, and though the position comes with a dramatically increased amount of stress, he has exceeded expectations again and again. A couple of years ago, a teenage boy tried to break into Paul's truck while Paul was working from his home office, he saw the boy from the window and went out to confront him. This was apparently the first time the boy had done something like this. By the end of the conversation, Paul was able to get the boy in contact with a therapist in the area and help the boy see that he has more potential than he currently realized. And instead of putting him behind bars, he hopefully set him on a path to improve his life. Paul really cares for people and frequently goes above and beyond to help people in need, even if that need isn't obvious, and even if there is an easier, quicker solution. Cycling is one of Paul's passions, we all know that, and a good stress reliever, he recently badly hurt his toe and still stuffed it in a cycling shoe and rode for 30-plus miles, only to, to discover, when he took off his shoe, that it was swollen, purple, and broken. He had rushed home to log onto a virtual meeting for work on his day off, and although he was in extreme pain, he still conducted business as usual in the meeting without anyone knowing he was in pain. He is so dedicated to this city that he didn't want a painful broken limb to reduce his effectiveness at work, even on his day off." And that is Paul. And I am so grateful that I've had the chance to work with him for so many years, he is such an example to me, and I want to present him with this coin, and I have another one because I know, um, I know that Paul couldn't do this without his wife, and so, would you, well, Paul's already up here, Paul, you're gonna have to go down there, and she come up here, and, yeah. And I also, I wanted Paul to know that, um, because it isn't normal to honor a staff member for, for what they do in their employment, I did, um, ask the council for permission to do this, and they agreed, so, and I'm sure that they'll probably want to say something as well.
I, I think that, that a lot of those stories really get to what Paul, who and what Paul is like. I've had many conversations with Paul on the phone that have probably been fruitless from your perspective, that, uh, you know, I, I can be a little, uh, hard-headed, um, but there have also been, I think, a lot of wonderful times where we've been able to, to hash things out and, and come to better solutions because you take that time, um, to meet me where I'm at, and, and I think that that's been a, a very good, valuable skill that you bring. Um, I also just want to add, uh, I don't know that I know much detail about how it works and, and what he does specifically, but he also serves on his, his kids' school, um, board, um, and offers that service to the community, which, he's, he's busy enough as it is, and he's, he's willing to do that, and that should be commended as well. Thank you for all you do.
Yeah, I would just like a chance to say thank you, I, I loved hearing those stories, and, and they really kind of sum up my experience with Paul as well. Um, any, anytime you need anything, anytime you have a conversation with Paul, he takes the time to make sure that you understand, to make sure that, that you feel heard, that, that helps, you know, solve your problems, and it, it's just wonderful to work with Paul and know that we have somebody that we can, that we can trust, and that we can, um, know that our city is in good hands.
Well, I, I'm probably the one who's had the shortest experience with Paul here, the last five months, and, and although we've butted heads from time to time, I want him to know that I really appreciate that, that he, that he is a good sounding board, and has, has really helped mentor me and helped me to gain a greater desire to even become a more effective and better person and council representative, and I'm grateful, Paul, and look forward to the next three and a half years of a, of a, of a rambunctious, uh, productive and fun relationship, I'm, I'm grateful to you and look forward to developing that further.
Do you want me to just forego my time, or should I start talking about, uh, how you yelled at me today? That's true. At 8:00 this morning while he's trying to change his blinds and he's telling me how frustrated he is. Right? No, I mean, uh, Paul and I have had a special relationship, both, uh, working relationship with the city, and of course, uh, some other church obligations that we've worked in complimenting, uh, assignments, that, uh, we've been able to work at different levels in, in a lot of things, and it's been super fun to, to get to know each other in, in different atmospheres, I'll say, and, uh, you know, at 1:00 in the morning, when I told him not to quit and those types of things, where I said, "Don't jump off the ledge yet." I, I've been able to, to be in some of those more private conversations, and, uh, it's been super fun to, to be there for Paul and, and for him to be there for me more than anything, so, really appreciate your service, and I've told you that, even today when you were mad at me. No, just kidding, uh, great guy, great guy, so thanks for all you do.
I'll keep this short, but...
I'll keep this short, but... Yeah. Paul and I probably don't spend as much time together as people might think we do, although we do spend a considerable amount of time together. And I enjoy very much working with Paul. I can't imagine what this would be like without him, and I do consider Paul a true friend. And can vouch for the fact that he is a true public servant and... In fact, if I get a little short with him, it's usually because he's not reserving enough for himself. He's... Sometimes he's quick to apologize when I'd rather he wouldn't, you know? But that's just... He's just so over-the-top sincere and has nearly, nearly infinite patience, and so it's... I try to make a little bit light of it when he does... The rare times he does get angry, I threaten to break out the camera because I got a requirement. Because he is so durable, so rugged, and impatient, and puts others first. So definitely, I... Yeah. Thank you for all that you give to the city and all those around you, so thank you.
And thank you so much, Lonnie, for supporting him and making it possible for him to do the job that he does. We do recognize that it comes at a great sacrifice to you and your family.
It always seems like we ought to just end the meeting, you know? And go on, but no, we have still a lot more in the way of... A lot of business to do here, so. Item... Item number nine on our agenda is the acceptance of the May 2022 Youth Council election results. And so we will... What? Confirm the election? Is that what's the proper term? We will...
Just accept the...
Accept it? We will accept the election results in total.
Okay.
Yeah, in total, but I will... I will read off the names. So Gavin Glad, Youth Council Mayor, is that correct?
Yes, and the ordinance reads that the individual with the highest number of votes qualifies as to be the Youth Council Mayor, so he would be Youth Council Mayor for this upcoming term, and then the other individuals would be council members.
Okay.
Can you have them stand as their names are called?
Yeah, if they're here and I read your name, please stand. Macy Campos, Youth Council Member. Laura Jones, Youth Council Member. Sedona Montano, Youth Council Member. Gabriella Pangra, Youth Council Member. And Kason Welch, Youth Council Member. All right, well, thank you very much for running for Youth Council Office, and we definitely look forward to working with you. And with that, what... Is there something important?
We're wondering if we can still do the...
Well, we gotta make a motion.
I know, we have to make a motion, so yeah.
Let's... You want to just get that... Let's... Okay, as long as it's...
So following the motion, we would do an oath of office.
Oh, okay. Oath of office, okay, well, we'll do it in that order. So, okay, tell you what, you can go ahead and be seated, but we're gonna get you right back up in just a moment. So, all right, with that, I will call for a motion.
Mayor, I move that we accept the May 2022 Youth Council election results as read. Second.
All right, we have motion from Councilmember Graves, second from Councilmember Wright, and let's start the vote with Councilmember Burnham.
What? Did I hear Gray? I thought I heard Curtis.
Oh, great.
That was my ears then.
Okay, maybe I'm not enunciating properly, but let's start the vote with Councilmember Burnham.
Yes.
Councilmember Love?
Yes.
Councilmember Wright?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Okay. That motion passes. All right, so now, now it's time to administer oath of office, so if all of you will come forward. Whoop, come down there. Uh... 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 Okay, okay. All right. We will now turn some time over to Councilmember Wright.
Thank you, Mayor, and I just... I want to say it's one of my liaison assignments that I've recently been given permanently, which, well, at least for the next little while. I've really enjoyed the opportunity to work with the Youth Council in our city, and one of the individuals who I've had a chance to get to know a little bit is Gabby Pangra, and she exemplifies what we're looking for in our youth and in those who serve in the Youth Council. I love that you just took the oath of office. You served last year on the Youth Council. She's back again for another term, and it's the same oath of office that our city recorder actually administered to both myself, Mayor, and every member of council. I think it's important to remember that we swear an oath to the Constitution. She's a really fantastic young lady who exemplifies what we're looking for in our Youth Council members. She also is the recipient this year of our Youth Council Scholarship Award. She had to attend Youth Council, participate regularly in that. She wrote a beautiful essay, and she is being awarded this evening a $1,000 scholarship that will help fund her college education to the school or trade tech college, whatever you choose. Eagle Mountain City will fund $1,000 towards her education, so I invite you to come up, Gabby, and everyone to give her a hug, and let's go down and present it to her.
So we have Michelle Mooney completing a term expiring December 2022 and filling a three-year term through December 2025. And I will call for a motion. Is Michelle here?
I am here.
Oh, okay, sorry. Okay. I've not met, okay? All right, let's... Are you?
That me?
I think that... I don't know.
I got double check.
I move that we appoint Michelle Mooney to the Library Board, completing the term expiring 2022 and filling a three-year term through 2025.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Gray and a second by Councilmember Burnham. So let's go... Let's start the vote. Councilmember Love?
Yes.
Councilmember Wright?
A resounding yes.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Burnham?
Yes.
All right, that motion passes. All right, so another oath of office? So if you will come forward, Michelle? We're getting our exercise today, aren't we?
Yeah. I like having steps on time. Yeah. I like having steps on time. Yeah. Pretty good. Yeah. 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 All right, thank you, Michelle, for joining the Library Board. That's wonderful. Hope it's a good experience for you. Okay, next up, we have... Yeah. Oh, we're still trying to sort that out. I'll double check.
Because I'm like... Now I'm worried that I've been neglecting my duty.
Okay, I'll double check.
But I was like, I swear it was me last year, but not this year.
Okay, I'll check. I will check. All right, so our consent agenda, we reviewed that in work session and that went smoothly. So with that, I will call for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Wright, and did I hear a second by Councilmember Curtis? Okay, let's go to a vote. Start with Councilmember Wright.
Yes.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Burnham?
Yes.
Councilmember Love?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Okay, next up is item 17A, which is a... It is a public hearing, but it is not an action item. So we will allow time for anyone that would like to speak on this, but this is in Orange City, Eagle Mountain City, Utah, adopting the fiscal year 2020.
You are the Library Board Liaison?
No, well, I made a motion.
That's right. We got this.
I'm still trying to look it up.
We got this. We got this, okay? I don't... I don't...
By accident, I did my job.
He is so good.
Then I don't even have to try it.
You don't even have to try it. Okay.
That can't be right.
I'll double check. I'll double check. Okay. Item 17A, in Orange City, Eagle Mountain City, Utah, adopting the fiscal year 2022/2023 annual budget. Like I said, this is not an action item, but we will allow time for public hearing. So with that, we will turn time over to Ms. Kimberly Roosh.
Mayor and council, we covered kind of the specific details regarding this item in our workshop session there. I will just kind of identify for the benefit of those that are here that the additional changes that we've discussed to be included in the public hearing tonight total an increase in expenses of $536,484. And then I'll just entertain any additional questions we have, or if there's any other items that the council had that I did not previously receive that you wanted to discuss or consider as part of this budget to either add or remove, this is the time to be able to have that discussion as well.
Do you want me to do the public hearing first?
Yeah, we can. We can go ahead and get public hearing out of the way since... Yeah, we did review this in work session, so let's go ahead, and it is 7:54 PM. We'll open up the public hearing. Anyone like to speak on the budget? So Finn, do we have anyone?
I don't have any, Mayor.
Okay. All right, so seeing no one, we will close public hearing at 7:54 and come back to council for questions, comments.
I would like to speak just a little bit on the position we talked about last time, time, which was similar to the position in Provo City and the desire to have an employee that reports to the council. And so I looked in state code and it says that the mayor is the chief executive officer of the municipality to whom all employees of the municipality report. So this position would have to report to the mayor and I'm assuming our city administrator as well. And so that's something you would have to consider. There are two ways around that. The first way is to change code, to, to remove that power from the mayor and to give it to the council. That requires a unanimous vote of the council or a majority vote of the council and approval by the mayor. I, I think I can tell you your chances of that are zero. So the other option is to change our form of government to the form of government that Provo has, but we as a council can't do that. That has to be on the ballot. So just not speaking for or against the position, but just explaining the realities of what, what we were discussing.
Right, and I, I think there's been, I mean...
And if there's been changes, no one has communicated those.
No, I don't think that there's changes, but I think, you know, Brett and I have consulted with outside legal and we believe that, that there are, there's opportunity to, to do what we'd like within the framework of the law. So I, I think that there are possibilities, but I also believe that I'm not married to anything in particular. I think that there's a goal that I'm trying to achieve and that goal is simply to be more effective as a legislator and to make sure that, that the vision of, of the council is, is understood, well-understood, communicated and moves forward and that we just have a mechanism to make sure that that occurs.
And if I can speak to that, Mayor, may I have a moment?
Please.
I, I want to say, at least from my, my intent in this, and I'll be just as frank and open and transparent as I am able, my, my intent in this is in no way to, to subvert or skirt around the requirements. The state code requires that all employees in the municipality report to you. That's got to be part of the equation that has to be met in regard to this employee and his or her duties. But I, in, I'm, I'm absolutely in agreement with Councilmember Curtis that I would like to see the legislative priorities of this body weighed and moved forward in a way that, that hasn't transpired in the past, to be frank. And my goal in, in supporting this is not to create any issues, contention or anything else, but simply to exercise the authority of this body to legislate and that and nothing more. And certainly want to do that within the bounds of the law. And I think Councilmember Burnham is correct, as I have studied this. I think that there is a duty for this employee to report to you, but I also believe that we can craft and create this position and work over the course of the next six months to make sure that we do that so that it accomplishes what this body would like it to accomplish and also mitigates concerns that I've heard that have been raised by staff members and certainly, Mayor, any concerns that you might have. I'm open to having those conversations. I want to make sure that we are having open, honest and kind and productive conversations about, about the needs that the council is feeling that aren't being met. And I'm going to leave it there. Tonight, what we're looking at, from my perspective, is not crafting this position and detailing all of the ifs, ands or buts about it, but simply approving a budget line item, which is well within the authority of this body to do, to provide a mechanism whereby if we come to a determination that this individual can do or facilitate the things that we'd like to see facilitated, that we have the funds in line to do that.
Mayor, I would like to request that we have a discussion about this, have it, have it on the agenda and have a discussion about this because I'm unsure, because I'm really unsure... Okay, so I've served on the council for 12 years and I entirely disagree that the council's legislative priorities have not been represented by the staff. I feel like they have represented them very well. They followed through with things that we've asked them to do. And so I personally feel that that statement is an attack on our staff. Whether it was intended that way, I don't know how else it could be taken personally.
Certainly not intended that way, Councilmember Burnham. And if, and if that's how it was received, I will offer a public apology. It's not intended that way. The results that I have experienced, and I can only speak for myself, is that those things that I see as a priority and recognize that there is a will among this body to accomplish, I don't think there's any intent, intention in not working to accomplish that. I think it's an issue of bandwidth. We don't have the, we don't have the capability of getting to those things that are important to me as a legislator because we're so busy dealing with the administrative side of what we have to do. When the phone's ringing and the emails are arriving and you're having to collect utilities and you're dealing with water issues, those things occupy our staff's time and that's, they're the first line of defense. They're wonderful at that. But it puts on the back burner some of those things that I feel as a legislator are very important and critical moving forward.
And I guess that's why I want to have the discussion.
I think, I think we need to.
Because I don't know what's not moving forward, I guess. I just don't, and so I think we need to have that discussion.
For, for me, I would ask this person to do things I would never ask staff to do because I know that they're busy. I would ask this person to track things. I would ask this person to do research. I would ask this person to do a lot of things that I wouldn't ask staff to do because I know how busy they are and, and this is a resource in my mind for us.
And so I, I get that. I get, I see that as a, a management analyst. I see that as something like that. Other than that, this person is going to be using staff time, other staff members all the time because to get their information, unless they're doing research outside of the city, they're going to have to ask staff members. So it's going to be one more person asking staff members. I don't know. I would like to ask our city administrator what his thoughts are on this position, if he wanted to share them. In terms of budgeting, that's what we're talking about here.
And I think frankly, that the concern for me is that as far as budget is concerned, this is our authority. That's what's frustrating to me, is we have the legislators and it is our authority to budget.
Yeah, but for a position that we're not even sure is fully legal is, is my confusion.
We put placeholders in the budget all the time.
Right. So, but we set, we talked about asking Paul last meeting what he thought about it, but he wasn't here. So why is it inappropriate today for me to ask him what he thinks about it?
First of all, I don't know that I think it's inappropriate, but I think that what we need to do and what's been difficult in our organization is where is the line between administrative and legislative? If the legislature, the, the city council wants to get something done, how do we do it? So, so let's take, for example, an appointment code that four of us have directed to be done for months. Where is that and how come it hasn't been done? We asked for it. We asked nicely. We went through the appropriate protocols to do that. There is no will to do that. Why has it not been done? That's the real question. For example.
I thought there was a committee that was supposed to be working on it.
Okay, so, so Councilmember Curtis, we had a miscommunication. I felt like I had asked for an appointment and had, and it had been ignored and I had sent it to the wrong email. So that's on me. So that, that, that is going to get done. I'm not, I, I agree with you and, but I'm not saying that to disagree with you. I'm just trying to say in that one circumstance.
You're correcting and I appreciate you doing that because it was a miscommunication.
I feel like it is hard for us as a collective body to get anything done because we're not allowed to meet as a collective body. If we had one point person, we could communicate with that point person individually. They could summarize things. We could get a lot of things done that just structurally we can't get done right now. That's, that's one of the benefits that I see.
And I, and I think that, I think that I would just make this statement. If during the course of the next six months, as we have those conversations, which we need to have, Councilmember Burnham, we arrive at a consensus that this isn't going to accomplish the objectives that we think it will, or that we are acting in some way inappropriately or outside of the bounds of the law, I will be the first one to say, remove it and let's do something different. Because I don't think that's what we're attempting to do here. It's simply another avenue for the legislative body to be able to accomplish the legislative's priorities. In my, in my, in my determination, that is it and only it.
I in no way meant to say that I don't think that you don't have an opinion. That's not what I was trying to say. You have your opinion, tell us whatever you're feeling.
No, I appreciate being asked. I know I've, I've actually touched base. Councilmember Curtis, I apologize. You're, you're the last one and we talked for like three minutes before the meeting began. So, you know, again, I, I think part of poorly timed vacation as well as some outside church obligations took me away from the two meetings. This was discussed and, and so I've had to try to play catch up, obviously, on this. And so I've had conversations. Yes, sometimes I've been frustrated, I'll be honest, and you guys know that. Today I was frustrated, yes, I confess. I was frustrated this morning. But in that, I hope that, you know, I've, I've said something often and I, I hope you guys, as, as the legislative body, understand that I'm not just saying this. I, I mean it. Staff doesn't sit around finding ways, trying, trying to find ways to subvert the legislative process. We don't have time for that. We, I'm going to try to carefully craft what I'm about to say because I don't want our employees here, and I say our employees, to feel like we're, they're taken advantage of. But we are a very low-cost government. I'll just put it that way. We have an outside agency who has told us just how low-cost and it's not something to be proud of. I have been here for a long time. I'm going on 15 years. I've, I've seen us morph into an organization that's, that, that is different. Yeah, we have the same structure, but it's different now because of the types of issues we have to confront as a city. Yeah, I, I feel like we hit about 50,000 people and something happened, something changed. I, I cannot put my finger on it. I can't tell you what. Things got a little bit more weighty and I think that's why the state classifies cities of varying populations as a different class of city. There's, there are other things expected of cities of the first and second class and they are of the third, which we currently are and we're not going to be third for very long. I mean literally months probably before we become a city of the second class. That's how fast we're growing. But, you know, I, I joke, I've got lists of lists. I, I feel bad sometimes when I meet with our department heads and I just start rattling off thing after thing after thing after thing after thing that I need them to look at. And going back to my days in finance as a finance director, we've taken immense pride in keeping fixed costs low so that we can put as much money into infrastructure, meaning parks and roads, as we possibly could for this city. Now, I understand that the residents, rightfully so, see what we lack because we do. We lack things still. There's a lot of things that cities our size across the country have that we don't have yet, but no two cities are created equally and we face different things, different challenges. We have different revenue streams. When I, when I look at budgets of cities in other states and I see cities that have populations half our size with property taxes 10 times what we have, I think, what in the world? No wonder we, we can't do what we would like to do, what our residents sometimes ask us to do. And that has an effect, again, on not only operationally, our staff and what they can do, but it has an effect on you as our legislators, on what you guys can do too. With this budget request of, I think it's, what is it, 22 FTEs? That's unprecedented. We hit a point where there's diminishing returns on cost cutting. You can't cost cut your way to success in the private sector. You can't do it in the, in the public sector either. There's only so much you can do. The problem with the public sector is we can't grow revenue quite like the public sector, the private sector can. They, they can create products. Our products are you. Your, your, your streets, your parks, what we do for you as residents, that's our product. But in saying that, you're, you're our revenue and we don't exist without the residents paying their taxes. And so it's a, it's a teetering, it's a, it's a seesaw, you know? Yes, we can, we can give more to the residents, but we're going to have to exact more from the residents to get it. And that's where you, as our legislative body, have to make difficult decisions. You really do. And I, as staff, I've told our staff that we need to remember that you, as our legislators, operate in a different, a different realm of city government than we do. It's, I hesitate to say it, but it's easier for us to say no than it is for you guys. You are the ones that are, are answering to the people more so than we are. We answer to you, so in, in, in a way, we are answering to the people. But when we get to this point where we don't have the, as you said, Councilmember Wright, the bandwidth to be able to do what we need to, to continue to provide services in the, in the way our residents deserve for the, for the money they pay to get those services, then we've got to do something about it. We're obligated to do something about it. I, I, you know, one of the council members I've spoken to this week talked about some of the projects that they feel have gone ignored. And I do feel bad when I think about the, the amount of time that has been talked about. I, I will be honest, sometimes when things are, and please tell me to shut up if I've gone over my, my limits, just tell me I'm done. There, the times that those things have been discussed, sometimes in council meetings we're like, well, is that, is that kind of a directive or is that just kind of a one-off like comment that somebody made? Is there support? Does the mayor know about it? What do we do with this? And sometimes we're like, you know, I, I don't know. I don't know what we do with this. Sometimes, you know, we have the, the bandwidth that we, we ask, we can ask and say, okay, what, what is it? You know? We say, Mayor Westmoreland, has this been discussed with you? What, what do you want us to do with this? Is this something that, this is the top of the list right now or is it not? But when something's discussed repeatedly, that should be a cue to any of us that that's a priority and if we aren't responding, then we need to be held accountable for that. But I say that in a way that I, I believe the framework exists. I just believe that we have not given the resources to the existing framework. Donna mentioned, or sorry, Councilmember Burnham mentioned that, you know, management analyst, I know I've, I've said that to a few of you actually this week, that, you know, if we, it does sound like a management analyst to me too, because it's dedicated to issues that the legislative body has identified as priorities, that maybe a department head whose realm that particular request exists in does not have the time or the resources to deal with themselves. That person then can become the point person on delving into that, finding out, well, is there support from more than one council member? Is the mayor, is the mayor behind it? Now that we know those things, those boxes are checked, they can check with me and say, hey, do you know of any roadblocks before we start really allocating some resources to this, before we really dig in? I can, then, you know, if I have any issues or concerns, I can bring those up and that can be addressed in a, a reporting framework with, with you as a legislative body. At that point in time, if there's no, no barriers, we know what the, the timeframe, the expectation is on this, now we start to launch on the digging into it, the analysts, the analysis of this, where, let's say it has something to do with, with new code for development, that this analyst now has to get with the planning department, make sure they allocate time to this analyst to give the needed information so that we can start working on this project. That's, there's, there's the ability to, to make sure that we were responsive too because that person, then I, I can, I can ask, if I'm meeting regularly with you guys, I know I've addressed that as well, and I, and you guys ask me, where is this? I'm meeting with that person regularly as well and I know, and I can report back or the mayor can report back, either one of us. So I, I know, Councilmember Gray, I'll, I'll stop. I've said a lot.
I was just going to point out that, that what, I think the point you're missing on that is that person's going to tie up some time with the staff. I'd rather one person get the information from the staff than individually, because we can't go together, me calling Steve and taking an hour, him calling Steve and taking an hour, calling Steve. That person is going to get the info and report back so that we just freed up six hours of his time. Instead of six of us calling to find out an answer to a question, we're going to delegate one person. Or at least that's the thought, I'm saying.
And I would respectfully say that that's my role, partially my role. I share that with the mayor as, as delegated by the mayor to do that. That's, that's where, if I'm meeting regularly with you guys and I know, I mean, again, I preface this with the fact that you, feel free to call. I, I've talked about and clarified with one council member this week that council members can call and ask questions. We just want to make sure that council's not directing staff because then they don't know who they're supposed to listen to first. If, if, feel free, if this management analyst, you know, you have questions, call them up.
And, and that's where I wanted to qualify because it's not my intent either. Our, I, I fully understand the role of the legislative portion of our government. We have no right to tell them what to do on a day-to-day basis, but we do have the right to set policies and procedures and directions by resolution and ordinance for where we would like things to go. And in order to do that, we need a feedback process about what's happening, how it's happening, if it's moving forward so that we know, so that we know if more action needs to be taken or not. I think that that's the important part that we currently are, are lacking because sometimes we might ask for something and it's out there for four or five months and we don't know and we're, and, and it's like, oh, we're still working on it, but... and it's like, oh, we're still working on it, but we don't... Once again, it's a bandwidth thing. It's not a subversion thing. I'm not insinuating that. It's that there's no mechanism in place. And you talked about these mechanisms. That's one of the mechanisms that we certainly lack is, okay, you know, we've had times where Councilmember Gray will want to bring something up at the end of a council meeting and he's told, it's not noticed on the agenda, we can't talk about it. Well, then how are we supposed to do this?
I would add just one comment. I mean, this is valuable for me, Mr. Jerome, I'll just tell you that. And I think you're right. And I think from staff perspective, when you say, gosh, we hear Councilmember Wright say this, and Councilmember Gray say that, and Councilmember Burnham say this, and we're not sure if that really meets the standard of a directive, if you will, or if a consensus has been reached. And part of, at least my thought process in this, is that this individual's going to help us make sure that that is effectively assessed and communicated. So that you don't have to wonder, is this a directive from council? Is this a legislative priority for them? I heard him say this and her say that, but I'm not sure if they agree, or if they have a majority that agrees. And I think that that in and of itself is benefit enough for me to pursue this course of action, to begin to craft it, to just simply see if we can come up with something that takes some weight off of your shoulders, that relieves us of this feeling that we're not able to effectively communicate, what is a priority for this body, to staff? And then to work through the mayor, to make sure that he's meeting with you and executing those directives.
And I appreciate that, Councilmember Wright. I think that, again, as I discussed with several of you, having this person who, that's their primary responsibility, is what you, as the legislative body, the six of you, are wanting to be looked at. That could even be something that happens, you know, you, Councilmember Wright, you bring up something in this meeting, and mayor could say, well, is that, are you wanting that to be looked at? If mayor has concerns, I mean, certainly you guys can talk, but then that directive can be given to an employee who's dedicated to looking into these issues and finding a solution. And again, within a reporting framework where you, as a legislative body, know where this request is at.
And from my perspective, I think one of the things that's really important to remember is that we have the administration, we have the executive powers that are vested in this six-member council that have been delegated to the mayor, that he executes, right? He exercises those. And then the legislative powers that belong to this council. Jeremy, if I'm out of line, Donna's looking at me like I'm crazy.
We didn't delegate the powers. He had the powers.
That's how the six-member council works.
That's how it works.
That's not my understanding of it. And if I'm wrong, I'm certainly open to correction, but my understanding is that the executive powers are vested in the city council, except for a few simple exceptions that the state code outlines that are delegated to the mayor specifically. And all of the rest of those executive powers reside in this council. And they have been delegated by this council to the mayor to exercise in our behalf.
Or a previous council.
Or a previous council. We didn't do it, obviously. Someone else did that.
And nobody's even advocating changing that.
And look, and maybe it's part of that, maybe part of that is the communication that we should be having, is we should be learning to be more effective and understand what a six-member council is and what it isn't, what the duties and roles and responsibilities of each of us are, so that we don't step on each other's toes. My intent is not, on the record again, is not, has not been, will not be, to undermine the powers that have been delegated to the mayor. They're his. They're his unless five members of this council decide they're not. And I don't foresee that happening, and therefore, I am on the record willing to work within that framework. But what I am not interested in doing is not legislating.
Right. And I totally get that. Our job is to legislate. And I'll give you an example. Carolyn wanted to do leave for bereavement leave. So she approached the staff, she approached me. I don't know if you approached other council members. You asked the mayor. It's on the agenda. She wrote it, we discussed it, we voted on it, we legislated. When I wanted to do a legislative thing, I followed the same framework. I talked to the mayor, got permission to work with staff, because I was going to be taking some staff time. I didn't take a lot of staff time, but I did take some. And we worked with the staff and got it presented. Unfortunately, it stalled at the planning commission. And you know what I'm talking about. So, there is a process. And that's what legislators do. And so, the management analysts, the reason why I was thinking that is because the state legislature, they have people that help them to craft that kind of stuff and help them to do the research they need. But, and I'm probably still on the old, what you guys sent me, because you guys have obviously had more discussions about this since last time. But the position that I was sent from Provo is very much an executive position. And I don't think there is any reason to have another executive. We need workers.
No.
Not an executive position.
And I feel like we're talking about three people that all did the same thing with a different name. And I think we need to hammer out what they do and what we want them to do. And we know they need to report to the mayor, but we're all talking about, I think, the same person, and I don't think we're that far apart when we get down to...
No, I don't think we are.
That we feel like we need a person, we just need to hammer out what this person would do.
Because for me, ultimately, it's about process. So you say we have a mechanism, but the reality is, if I look at, a new council member walks in tomorrow, there is nothing they're going to be able to find that tells them how that they're supposed to legislate. It's not out there. There's no, first you need to do this, now you need to do this, now here's the process to get this done. It doesn't exist. It just says legislate. And then, so someone, for example, like Councilmember Gray, in his time at council, he says, well, I'd like to move this forward. And then two other people agree, and then it doesn't happen. Because we don't have an effective mechanism. It's not about people. It's not about someone saying, no, we're not going to do it. It's about the mechanism. We don't have the appropriate outline...
The process.
The process. We may have the framework in there. It may work in this, but we don't have the way to ensure this is how it's done officially. Once it's official, it goes to this next process. Then it goes to this next process, and someone can follow it through the process and say, oh, it looks like it got killed right here because there was not three people. Okay. And then Councilmember Curtis is like, well, I guess I'm done, because I couldn't convince two other people, right? Like, that's what I'm talking about. I am talking about...
Let me give you a specific example, because this dealt with you and I, and I love you. You know, I've worked with you a long time, so don't take this the wrong way. You keep me in check. There was a time when I said I want to look at the fence code. In a way to tell, the end of the meeting to say, this is my time to say, this is something that I want to look at. And I said, is anyone else, because I don't, I might be the only guy. And then finally, I'm going to jump, you leaned forward and said, he said he'd put it on the agenda. I don't want it on the agenda if I'm the only one interested. What I want to know is, what's the mechanism? How can I ask, is this something worth exploring? And I finally said, apparently it's not, because no one else is following me, and I dropped it. But the mechanism that Colby's talking about, I don't know how I was supposed to bring that forward other than asking, are there others who want to look at the fence code?
And I thought that that's what we discussed after that situation. And we said that in the council business, that you could bring up things and we could have somewhat of a straw poll. We talked about that, to see if there was enough interest to get it on the agenda.
But see, that process, and we have since. I've continued to use that. But I'm saying back then, his point was a new member, how do you do that? You don't know how to do that. And even we didn't understand how to do that. Because I tried to ask, and I failed miserably, because no one understood where I was going. And you know what I mean? It was just a terrible exploration of trying to move something forward as a legislator that failed terribly.
You know, and I feel like as a council, it's very easy for us at the end of the meeting to say, we want to tackle this and this and this and this, and we have one other person that agrees and wants to tackle those things, and they pile up. But I feel like if there was one person that was kind of tasked to move all of those things forward, we would be forced to prioritize. And we'd be forced to choose which is most important. And we'd be able to maybe get our most important things done and understand that we've put something else at the bottom of the agenda. And we're not overburdening the staff and then going, how come you don't do our stuff?
If we're forced to prioritize, but who's going to prioritize? The hiry or...
No, it would be us.
We would, as a group.
We have to take an action like a...
I think that's part of where it gets, look, if the six of us sit here, and mayor, you should be involved in these conversations. You're part of this body. If you have priorities that you want to be involved, that you want to see move forward, what we should do, in my opinion, is the six of us should establish individual priorities, bring them and have a discussion about what they are, and see where there's a consensus to move forward on those priorities, and then rate them. Say, look, we've got these fifteen things that we'd like to get done. There's only four of them that we can get a three-member vote to move forward? Which of the four is most important?
But that does have to be done in a public meeting.
And it should be, and it should be.
So what I'm hearing is process, not person.
And I want to jump in there and say...
And if we had an outlined process, would we need a person?
I will answer that. And I'll tell you, as Paul was yelling at me today, it's a joke, right? As me and Paul were talking about this, and Colby said it a minute ago, and I'll vouch, I'm not married to the idea that we have to hire somebody. If we can prove that we can refine our process and more effectively communicate, more effectively... The emails that have came the last couple of weeks, was it the mayor that sent those? I'm not an emailer. It was Steve. Steve sent them. Hey, I think we're going in the right direction. We may not need this. But in the meantime, we haven't, I kind of started this conversation after the mayor called me and I said, wait, this sounds like a legislative assistant, through our conversation. And I started steering that, trying to figure out what it was that we were trying to accomplish. Now, what I told Paul today, this isn't the only way to skin a cat. This is from the nose to the tail. We might be able to go from the tail to the nose. It's the only way that's in front of me. If we've got a better idea, you're right, we don't need this. That's why we're not pushing for it immediately. We don't know if there is a better idea. It's the only idea in front of us. And we know Provo's idea isn't going to work here. It's just the only one we could find that could put on paper our idea.
It's literally just, and I don't even want to call it a template. I want to say that it's... It's a rough draft of some tasks that an individual could help us do more effectively in our legislative responsibilities.
And a list of some other tasks that they shouldn't be doing for us.
Oh, absolutely not. There's a whole page that are city recorder jobs, and half of the first page is city administrator and mayor jobs. I mean...
It shows us what we should and shouldn't do.
Honestly, less than 10% of that job isn't already done by an executive in the city. So I was confused by that.
And I think that we may find places of agreement and disagreement as we discuss through that about...
And that's normal.
That's norm, right. And that's normal. For me, I just want to have a process where we say, okay, this is what we do, this is how we move it forward. If it gets caught up, how do we have a mechanism that that gets reported back? And that there's just an accountability across the board? If, it's really easy for Paul to come back and say, oh, looks like, hey, Colby, this thing that you wanted, nobody would back you up on it, so sorry.
And my hope is...
And then, there's no, he doesn't even have to defend it, because it's clear that I couldn't get the support, right?
And my hope is that it creates clarity. I hope it creates clarity for staff, for council, for the mayor, so that we can work cohesively as a unit to accomplish those things where we agree, shove those things to the side where we can't find agreement, and let them sit until we can find or muster the legislative, those legislators who will help us accomplish those. If we can find someone that will help us do it. It's, to me, it's a very difficult, lengthy, troublesome process that will yield wonderful results if we tackle it appropriately. That's my hope.
And I feel like we should do a lot of things concurrently. That we should speed up our vision and our strategic goals and objectives that we're doing as a city, that we should work on our processes, that we should have time in our city council meetings that we can bring our legislative priorities to the front and discuss them, and maybe start going down this process where we list the things that we want to do as a council, that we prioritize them, and we just get started. And I think if we get started, things will become a lot more clear on this position and on what we're trying to accomplish as a council.
If I can just add one comment, and this is a generalization. This is not specific on this particular item, but I just want to invite, encourage, you know, anyone, anytime there's confusion, concern, idea, I just want to invite everyone to contact the mayor and let's talk about it. Councilmember Wright, like, I remember you had a concern, an idea, and you said, I'd like to see this happen. And so, we had a chance to say, you know, well, let me tell you what I've run into on this subject and why it hasn't moved forward. And, yeah, we've been able to, and we're still working on it, right? Still working on it.
Those conversations are wonderfully helpful.
Yeah. Yeah. So, I just want to, again, invite, encourage, feel free, give me a call. Say, hey, what about this? Okay, back to the budget. Is there anything?
Wait, what's that about?
Anything else we needed to cover at this time there? It's not, yes, we did, we did, it is not an action item, so there will be no vote. But I just wanted to make sure everybody had a chance to say their piece.
And I just think, just this whole thing, like, I get it that we may all want to go in different directions, but I think that there's enough common ground that we understand that we just want to accomplish something. And there's multiple ways to skin a cat. I don't know how we do it, but let's figure it out, together.
And the "together" part is the helpful part, because, you know, I'm left out of these conversations, and it would be helpful if I wasn't, because then I wouldn't be freaking out.
That's my fault, Donna. The only person I talked to today was Colby, and I tried to call Carolyn. I was busy, but you know I try to call you before every meeting.
Hey, welcome to my world.
We're suffering from the age-old problem of communication. And that's where I think that, especially for me, I'm a fairly, obviously, I'm a fairly black and white person much of the time. And so, even if it's just as simple as, this is kind of how we do it, and we just put it out here even, this, 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 I can follow the steps, and, okay, now do this. It makes it much easier for me to feel like I can be effective at what I'm doing. That's, I think, at least a big part of that, this for me. So, you know, I even see, I think I even threw out the word, project management for the council is kind of another word. Does that make sense? Like...
I like that one.
As much as it is legislative.
That one brings truth for me, as much as anything.
Right. This person doesn't have their own agenda. They don't operate on an agenda outside of me. Or, I mean, outside of Freudian slip there. They operate on an agenda that is, an agenda that we have three, preferably six of us agree to, and we move forward on that, you know?
All right. Very good. With that, it's okay, we'll move on. Thank you for everyone's input and comments. Let's move on to seventeen B, which is an ordinance, public hearing, in ordinance of Eagle Mountain City, Utah, rezoning certain lands known as Motilla Technology Park. And Steve gave us a little bit of a presentation earlier, so... Thank you, Mayor.
You're like me, rather, for quite a fire than me here.
I'm going somewhere where it's not so hot.
Okay, the Motilla Technology Park is a rezone application to add the regional technology... technology and industry overlay to about 120 acres in the southwest part of the, of the city. Parcels are listed there. Current zoning is agriculture and the general plan designation is business park light industry. Here's a map of the existing RTI overlay area. You can see Fairfield City as well. And then the rezone criteria, there's five rezone criteria that are listed there and in the staff report as well. So compliance with the general plan, compatibility with surrounding land uses or plans surround use, surrounding uses, the burden to city services, traffic generation, and effect on property values. And then, this is the general plan map that shows the business park light industry is everything in gray or blue there. And that's the city boundary, the dark black dash line. And you can see on these two maps, on the left is our existing transportation master plan, showing some major roadways going through the property or adjacent to it. And then a draft map, it's the latest draft map version that we had. But we are planning on bringing a new transportation plan to the city in the near future. And the question was asked in work session, what happens with that freeway if they follow an RTI site plan process for approval? What does staff do basically with that? And we, if the freeway is on the property and they're proposing something, we require the, the preservation of property for the freeway and don't approve a site plan over the top of that unless the transportation master plan is amended and that road is moved. Otherwise, we, we would require a dedication and preservation of all of those, at least half width of the major corridors that are along the boundaries of the property. May 10th, the Planning Commission voted four to zero to recommend approval of the rezone with no conditions or changes to the proposal. There was one concern brought up at the meeting by a resident, a neighboring resident about fencing and livestock and making sure that we work with the, the project to make sure there's fencing that's adequate there so that the livestock isn't an issue with traffic or any other, a safety issue.
How do we make sure without putting that right in the motion that that happens? Or is it already?
It, it, yeah, it really should be part of the site plan review process.
So is it?
Fencing is required as part of that process.
Is it required sufficiently to maintain cattle?
Well, that's, that's, that's a good question because do you require an adjacent landowner to put up fencing to keep the other property owners' cattle in their own, on their own property? Generally, no. But an industrial project adjacent to residential, for instance, has to put a fence up. And I'd have to look at the code and see whether, if it talks about agriculture, adjacent to agriculture.
Like Brett just mentioned, a long time ago, I've, I've shared that Utah's law is we're a fence in state, not a fence out state. But what's different about this to me is they currently have fences. And I'm wondering if this changes, if there are changes made, whether that would make changes to the fence, because they are fenced in currently or, or at least they're not a nuisance. And would that change? And how do we assure that if it did change that it was dealt with, right? Other than putting it in the motion, are we confident that this concern would be handled?
So this, this code does say, the RTI code says, walls or fences, as defined in a different chapter, shall be required adjacent to residential or agricultural zones. Such fencing may also be required around the entire perimeter of large, excuse me, of large-scale industrial or technological parks. So, yes, they're required to, to fence adjacent to agriculture.
And we feel like that's sufficient to answer the concern of this person?
I believe so.
Okay. I, I agree. Just want to make sure that.
There's no guarantee that, I mean, there are roads, like we saw in the transportation plan, there are major roads that would be built adjacent to the project. And if one of those roads is built adjacent to, the example we have is the Facebook project, Pony Express Parkway was built to the south end of their property. A fence was moved or removed as part of that. And they had to pay to, to help put that back up and make sure it was on, again, on their property, if I remember correctly. Chris, if you remember.
Yeah, no, that's exactly correctly. Had to pay to relocate the fence along the right of way, so.
Yeah. I mean, it's also normal when you're talking about nuisances with livestock. It's normal when, when development gets closer and closer to the livestock that occasionally there will be more nuisances than before because you'll have more people in the area and more vehicles. But hopefully this, would, obviously, this fencing required by agricultural zones, we would review that as part of their site plan and make sure that occurs.
Okay, so I think I have two sequential questions. The first one, second one's dependent on the first one. So first one, this would require anyone who wants to actually use this process to get an agreement, correct?
For a development agreement?
Yes.
Yes, I believe that's the new code that we, that we drafted.
Okay. So then, I know I asked this, but I'm going to ask it again because it's my, it's my concern. If, if I move forward on this and allow the rezone, I still have the right legislative, and it would be a legislative decision to vote against an agreement that I don't find beneficial, correct? Or would it be an administrative decision? Do I, do I have wide authority like I do with legislative decisions to say no to any agreement that I don't find beneficial?
Well, I mean, you, you had to deny the agreement based on some provision that they're not addressing in the code, so.
Right. So it would be more administrative then?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, more than a regular, like a zoning approval? Yeah. I mean, it, it's got to be based on something that.
Based on findings of fact.
Yeah. Not, not simply, we don't like the project, we're going to deny it.
Okay. Thank you.
And Mayor, just to make sure you know the applicants here as well. I'm not sure if they have anything prepared or just to answer questions, but, and it is a public hearing.
Okay. Are, are there questions for the applicant? Is there anything the applicant would like to say that hasn't been, anything you want to add that hasn't been already addressed? You can think about it. Let me know. Okay. Okay, we do have a public hearing. So let's go ahead and do that. It's now 8:45. We'll open a public hearing. Finn, do we have anyone that would like to address this on this item?
I haven't received any requests, Mayor.
Okay. So seeing no one, we'll close public hearing at 8:45. Come back to council for questions for staff or the applicant. I will entertain a motion. We're ready.
You or me? I don't care.
You've got your mic on, go for it.
I will say, let me find it. I move that the city council approved an ordinance of Eagle Mountain City, Utah, rezoning certain lands known as Mochila Technology Park.
To the RTI overlay?
Does it need to say to the RTI overlay or is that assumed?
It helps, but it's also assumed, so.
That's all that was written in the description, but I, obviously, rezoning it to the RTI, yes.
Second up.
Motion from Councilmember Gray, a second from Councilmember Burnham. Does anyone need any clarification on the motion? Seems pretty straightforward. Okay, let's start with Councilmember Gray.
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
No.
Councilmember Burnham?
Yes.
Councilmember Love?
Yes.
Councilmember Wright?
Yes.
All right, that motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, now we'll go to, next item is business. We try to keep business separate from liaison reports, but sometimes they mush together. So let's just real quick, just, let's just run through. Does anybody have any business?
The only real business, business item, and I'm going to say that I, I'm probably going to wait and think about it for a little while, but there are, because it's hot on the mind and in our forefront with Pony Express and rodeos and derbies, there are.
Oh, I think I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of things going on that, go ahead.
Would signage be a good first step? Is that, is that?
You're talking about the stop sign?
No, I'm talking about parking.
Oh, parking, yeah. Oh, I'm, I'm past both of those.
Okay. I can't keep up. I'm sorry.
We got those covered already. I think what, what I would say is, as a business-related thing is, is this is a delicate subject for me, and so I don't really know how to approach it. But what I, what I want to say that I kind of alluded to earlier is I really want the, the council and the city to have an opportunity to see and understand more about Pony Express events. And then, I would like to ask the city council and the, and the administration what their thoughts are moving forward. Because I, I'm at a little bit of a crossroads and I've got to be careful which hat I wear all the time.
Sure.
So, so I'm trying to wear this hat now and that hat so that I can get you some answers, and then this hat and that hat. And, and what I'm wondering is, when I took this over a, a long time ago, meaning the Pony Express event side of it, there were promises made, there were expectations, there were contracts, there were, you know, ideas floating out there. I think that I even admit that I'm going along with, now I'm saying before my time on council, that I agreed with all the things and stipulations that were made. I'm now at a point as Pony Express Events to say, I think we've proved ourselves. We've shown that the events can happen, that they either do or don't have benefit. That's up to whoever to decide. Now I'm at a point as Pony Express Events to say, as a city, do we find value and what do you want me to do moving forward? How would you like me to operate this? How would you, would you like it to grow? How would you like it to function? I will say that I've made promises financially. Any extra money is going to come back to, I almost said it earlier and then I thought, oh, it's not the right place. I'm going to say it now. I want to match the scholarship to our youth council as Pony Express Events. Man, I, I mean, I love getting involved in that stuff. That's the kind of thing that I think we talked about in the beginning. Now I'm at a point where we, we needed a rainy day fund, we needed to become flush, we didn't, we started with no money. I'm here to tell you there's money available. There are improvements that could be made. I don't know if that's where the, the fairgrounds is going to stay. If it moves, I don't want to spend money, mine or yours, if that makes sense. So, so I'm at a point where I need some direction as to what do you want me to do with the money? What do you want me to do with the grounds? What are you willing to do with the grounds? And I kind of brought this up in our budget meeting earlier. There are some things that I feel like if the city finds value in this, and maybe I'm going too far. I, I didn't even want to go here.
Well, let me, let me, can I just say this? I would love to maybe go to lunch and let's just talk about.
Well, I mean, that's great for you and I. But I mean, what, how do we get?
Might, might I make a suggestion? And I know that, I think Councilmember Wright has made this suggestion as well. Is it possible, just, I, I find that this can get a little bit.
I'm trying to avoid that.
Right. And I know you're trying to avoid that. Is it possible to have one of the other officers from the Pony Express Events come in and, and be the advocate, if that makes sense? I just.
I'm totally fine with that. And my point is, I'm not asking for anything. I want, I want direction so that I can go back to them and give them direction. And if you want them to come say, we want direction, we just want direction.
You know, and I think it would be helpful. I mean, it sounds like, I was going to ask for a proposal, but it sounds like you don't have a proposal. But in my mind, it would be helpful to kind of have a list of what you would like direction on and, and have that beforehand so we can kind of think about it. You're the expert here on this.
And that's kind of what I was thinking with the lunch proposal is.
Sure. And I love lunch if you're buying it.
Well, yeah, well, sure.
Put them on the city, right? I can't take your money. That's against the.
I better not say what I was going to say. My wife's spending a lot of money right now.
Right. But it's more like the, asking the question like, where do you see the rodeo in, in five years and what do you see as the difference?
And we can get input from other, you know, get Paul's input, maybe Jeremy's input, and, you know, and kind of start, you know, defining it a little bit.
You know, for instance, and this is where I'm not as cautious, or I'm still cautious, but, but I, I try to, it's okay to put lights in a snack shack at Corey Ride, but not any other park. I, I mean, everybody's going to advocate. I, I remember specifically Councilmember Clark advocating for things at Smith Ranch Park. That's her nearest park or most beloved and Woodhaven Park. And everybody's got their little park that they want to put money into. I don't dare say a word.
And, and I, I agree, but there's also one step further. I, I'm not the president of the organization that's running the.
Which is why I say I don't, I don't bring it up, so.
That's why it gets a little bit concerning to me. And this is not an indictment of you.
I'm trying to point out who's good enough if I don't.
I don't like things that, that start to get blurry. So I would love for us to find a way that we can move forward and give you the feedback that you need, but that also degraffies.
And you did make a comment earlier today that you were doing your liaison duties by talking about the, the rodeo.
Correct.
You aren't the liaison. Hello.
Hello. Wait. See, I'm, I'm, my list is from last year because I was last year.
You were last year.
We're outdated.
So I'd be happy to work with you on that as well.
Good, let's talk about that.
And, and my, my suggestion, Councilmember Gray, is that there's, there's a lot of other cities in our area that have rodeos, and they have specific structures. And you and I have talked about that before. And so I think that we could take a, a cue from them and perhaps look at how they have things structured and see if we can follow their lead and if they're doing things right or if we can improve on what they're doing.
Yeah, the rodeo always has, it, it, it has a rich history, doesn't it?
It does.
And I think that's my point. The history is in the history. What do we want to do now?
Right. And I think that's a valuable conversation.
And I would say this, because even though I've lived here a long time, I, I have not known the history. I've been learning about the history and.
Have you been to the rodeo?
Just pretend like you don't know.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. No, I've been.
And he bought 20 tickets to the derby every year. He's the reason it sells out. He buys them like.
And I get them early because if you don't get them early, you don't get them. So, but I, but I think that, I mean, I think in fairness to Councilmember Gray, as I've had obviously some conversations with him about this, I, I think the question, the, the questions that have kind of been in my mind is, number one, does the city see value in what's occurring there, recognizing that it's not the city that's doing that? It's a, it's a 501(c)(3) that's taking care of that. Do we, as the representatives of the city, do we see value in that, recognizing that it's at a park that the city owns, right? The grounds are, if I understand it correctly. And if I don't, somebody will knock me on the head.
I, well, I'll go and jump in and say, yeah.
You're welcome.
That is a city-owned park.
Yeah.
And we definitely have real interest in it. And I, I'll, I'll just jump right out there and say, no, I, I wholeheartedly endorse the richness of the culture of these events and what it does for our community. It has a very.
And I 100% agree with you, Mayor. So when I look at that in the context of, it's a park and it's a regional park, if I understand it correctly. And so it qualifies for some impact via money. And, and therein, for me, that's where the, the question is, and I think that's, without him asking that, I think that's where he's at, is, does the city have any desire, long-term plan? Is it part of the city's vision to construct this in such a way that it can grow? I don't know the answer to that. And, and that would create some, some financial impacts, obviously. If that's not, is that the long-term space for it? Or is there a better space in the community? I don't know the answer to that.
That, that's where it gets tough because the city doesn't own a lot of land. And certainly, I think if we all had our wishes, we'd probably say, let's find a really cool place to put this where it can just be indefinitely there. Yeah, because you see the growth coming around it. It's, we, we start to feel like, this is going to look like Lehigh, for instance.
So, so, so don't you think, well, and look at Lehigh's rodeo right off of Main Street, right? Their grounds are right there.
And I had suggested when Councilmember Gray called me that it would probably be appropriate to, to, to do capital facilities planning like we've talked about for other things.
I agree with that. And that's where I was headed.
Because my, in my opinion, this is my opinion only, I think that long-term it probably makes sense to move it. And I was just mentioning that to Paul because it's right next to the cemetery. That's probably not the best place for the rodeo arena. I understand that there's going to be.
Depends on whether or not you ride bulls. If you ride bulls, you're right where you need to be.
See, Colby, and that's my point.
We'll just take the, we'll just drop you next door, I guess.
So that, that's why I'm asking. And we agree that I'm waiting for the, the, the capital projects. But I don't want to spend my money or your money improving the grounds if, if this is not, you know, but at the same token, we're starting to get to a point where we kind of need to decide because some. but at the same token, we're starting to get to a point where we kinda need to decide, because some things have to get done.
Right.
Fencing, you know, certain, uh, you know, things that, that we can't, we're not little anymore.
You can't, you can't move as easily if you...
We used to sell a third of our tickets, we're, we're packed. Bathrooms, I brought up earlier, we, we just got bathrooms that we didn't ask for, but we did increase the size. Uh, they're already not big enough. I'm ready to start talking about more bathrooms.
Sure.
You know, and we stubbed two lines, we knew this would happen, but at the same token, if we're moving it, then let's just rent porta-potties, right? Uh, I, I just don't know all the ins and outs, and I'm gonna tell you another, two, two little quick things. Uh, even though I'm cautious, and you mentioned have somebody come, I'll have somebody else present certain things. Uh, I wanna make sure that I declare that, yes, I'm the president of the 501. No, I do not have any conflicts, and I do not make, I want, on the record, I don't make any money. In fact, I spend thousands of my own money. Just yesterday, I hauled probably $3,000 worth of dirt that I paid for, that I trucked, that I bought the fuel in my truck, because the parking lot has a sinkhole where the sewer line went through two years ago, that you could bury my dump truck in. I didn't call the city and say, will you come fill this sinkhole you created? I filled it.
Right, and I want you to know that I, that I, I appreciate the work that you've done. For me, it just becomes...
The second part, that I, that I wanted to bring up, though, that, and this is the frustrating thing, and, and Paul and I have had this conversation, I'm not throwing anybody under the bus, uh, two months ago in this meeting, during my time, I said there's some vandalism and, and, uh, graffiti that's gone on at the, at the fair park. If that was at Corey Ride Park, we would've done it on a night shift to get it covered up. If it was at, at the skate park, we would've closed the park and got it fixed. Guess when it got fixed? The day before the Queen Contest, when I went out and repainted it. Why does the city not treat that park like they treat the other parks? I'm not asking for a favor, and I don't have a conflict. I wanna know, why did, the night before, I go paint some very graphic graffiti? Because the city doesn't have, find value, and I, I'm going in the weeds, I, I don't agree with that. Uh, that's, that's...
Right, and I get what you're saying, but, but I think part of this is because now we're in kind of an interesting dynamic, because of the history, and now because you were a, a member of the body. I don't attribute any motive whatsoever, there is no negative motive, you do wonderful things for the community. It's just hard, because I have to, I have to remember, we have to remember that we've been elected to be up here for everything, right? And so, you have to always have that hat that's not the Pony Express Events. That's, and, and I know you're trying to do that, I'm not saying that you're not. That's where it's just hard for me, and so, if we can find a mechanism just to, to make that work and move forward, great.
And I'm gonna say this, I think if we could just send him away on a vacation for a little bit, maybe we could have that conversation about, what does the city really want to see happen here? And, and I don't mean that literally, okay?
I was gonna say, if you're literal, then assign me.
You're out too, Mayor.
But, 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 but my point is, I think that I see value in this body making some decisions about the long-term health, welfare, and, and benefit that it either, that it either sees or does not see in the continuation of those events. That's what I'm gonna say.
Okay, all right, good conversation. Thank you.
And I apologize for getting into the sum I didn't wanna go, but I, I just wanna move that forward, and through my liaison, and maybe lunch with the mayor, and I want Paul there, I want to share some financials, and I'm, I'm open. I want this to be an open, uh, deal.
Yeah.
And then I want the information, because if I don't advocate, it was my point, you don't know that we need lights, you don't know that we need snack shafts, you don't, so, so who else would bring that? And that's why I've, I've been cautious, and I'm trying to walk that line of, how do I give you the information without making it personal?
I think the anxiety that you experience is, um, understood and appreciated, because you are in an awkward position, and, um, not everyone knows how much work that you and others put into making all of that respectable and effective and a success, and, uh, and that, you know, it's kinda getting a little...
But on that, I wanna tell, I wanna tell a little story, and you, you're the only one that knows this. I was at an FFA event, we donated a basket to the FFA for sale. On the card in front of the basket, it said, donated by Eagle Mountain City. I'm not looking for accolades, I'm not looking for credit, I don't want anybody to say that this is Eagle Mountain City's rodeo. It's not Jared, it's not even Pony Express Events, it's a city rodeo. They said, "Oh, man, I'll go take a Magic Mark or scratch it," I said, "No, you don't." I want them to think it came from the city, I don't need credit for that. And our committee, we're not looking for a pat on the back, we work our tails off, because we're committed to making this good. We want the city to take the credit. I honestly, I, you know...
Yeah, and, and I, I, I don't know if I've mentioned this to you, I'm, if I haven't, I apologize, but, no, I, when, oftentimes, when people come to me and say, "How do I, I have this idea, how do I get it done?" Like, go to Pony Express Events, see how they do it. You know, jump in, spend a season with them, you'll see exactly. Yeah. That's what we follow. Yeah, yeah. Okay, uh, any other business, uh, let's, let's...
I can report on all last year's liaisons.
Liaisons.
Jared would like to report that he now knows he's the liaison for the library board. I'm just messing with you, man, just messing with you.
I, I just had a, a little, well, I don't know if it's business or not, but we've talked about, as a council, perhaps, um, invite, inviting our legislators to, like, a breakfast or dinner, and, um, I think that we should do it, um, before this legislative session.
Yeah, quite a bit before, huh?
Yeah, several months before, so that we can, and then perhaps either in the middle or at the end. So do it more than once, and we need to include all of those that represent us, so that's four.
I love it, I love it, and I support that, 'cause I, yeah.
I just wanted to kinda jump in on that thought, because it's something like, well, we lost UFA, but, um, at UFA, they actually have a legislative update, which I think would be really cool for us to have. Now, the legislators themselves aren't always available to do that, but, um, that's something for us to kinda toy with, uh...
I also, that was on my mind, is something that whoever gets assigned with these tasks that we've been talking about, could at least keep a pulse on, right? And that, that doesn't mean for any individual council member, it just means keeping an eye.
Yeah, you know, what UFA does is they sort of have this legislative watch, like, here's the bills, these are the ones we like, these are the ones that scare us, and, and, yeah.
Right, like the league, but, but tailored towards us, 'cause they don't necessarily, right, right. Clearly that one's for Provo, right? The rest of us don't like it, but...
So, I, 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 I just thought it was a really cool thing, and, and, yeah, maybe we can, uh, massage that a little bit, see what...
And if I could jump in, I talked to Evan about that very thing today.
Oh, okay.
For this, if this is the route, what, what I talked to some of you about, if that's the route we take, that would be one of the things we'd want to have happen, 'cause all of us struggle with that here.
Right, just keeping an eye on, okay, let's, keep an eye on all of the housing bills. What are they gonna do to our code one way or the other, right? No, right, it's not even whether or not we agree with it, we just wanna stay ahead of it, because then we can pinpoint that, this is a problem for us, someone's targeting our garages, for example. Right, and we, you know, we can at least, we can at least make our representatives, help our representatives know that we may or may not be...
And the lobby, and so, yeah, Evan tries to, to do this amongst his, all the rest of the things he's doing and analyzing right now, but that would, that's something he said, hey, this person could take that and do this.
That's why, that's why I was wondering, is this not part of the lobbyist type...
Lobbyist is, I see the lobbyist as different. The lobbyist is going after, after things that we need.
But they can also return and report and do the, the legislative update, right? Could the same person not, does that not...
Just for the legislation that they're working on, though.
Right.
Like, they're, they're so focused on, we're gonna get SR 73 widened, that they're not paying attention to garage size.
Correct, okay, fair enough, that's why I was asking, I didn't know if that was kind of the same.
Just generally that they're, they're tasked with different types of things. I mean, one is your bulldog, the other one, I mean, they're really just, they're doing that project management-style thing where they're, they're just keeping tabs on something, I, I don't know, like, I think there's opportunity, but, yeah.
Okay, cool, let's go to liaison, uh, reports. So, Jared, let's go back to you, we're having fun. Uh, any, anything, anything liaison-wise to...
No, I don't think so, I, I do wanna just mention that I need to get with Steve about DRC, um, and I'll keep that, keep it at that. The other, I, I've done really well at the library. We, I have nothing to report, because we just gave them three more employees, and they're doing great.
I think you did advocate for that.
I, I, I learned to in the end. So, I think I'm good.
Okay, Councilmember Wright?
I'm, I'm good, Mayor, I, I wanna recognize the efforts that you've put forth to, 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 to work through the youth council advisors, and I'm excited to hear that it looks like that's probably gonna happen in our next meeting, and I know we, as a youth council, are excited about that. You don't know that yet, but, uh, stay tuned, good things are coming.
And, yeah, thank you to Councilmember Love for the, uh, bird dogging on that one, so...
They're awesome people.
My pleasure, I'm excited.
Yeah, okay, so let's go right back to Councilmember Love for liaison.
Okay, so for the Legion, they have a blood drive coming up on June 10th. Um, there's a critical shortage of blood, um, that I had not heard about, but if you get on the Red Cross website, you'll, you'll see that they are desperately asking for blood. So you can go and sign up for that blood drive, or any other blood drive, that you can work into your schedule at redcrossblood.org. Um, the Legion will also be selling road, water at the rodeo this week on Friday and Saturday. Um, I, I know that we all love to support our veterans, and this is a way to support them by helping the Legion with their fundraiser, so that they can do all the great things that they do with our veterans.
Good, thank you, Councilmember Burnham.
So, um, I would encourage everyone, if, if you are interested in businesses in the city, and what is, what is happening on that front, to, um, if you're on social media, to like the Eagle Mountain Chamber of Commerce page. Um, they are gaining so many new businesses, um, and Meta is sponsoring scholarships for membership in the chamber for businesses that are owned by women or minorities. So, if you, your business qualifies for that, and you would like to have some of those advantages that being a chamber member give you, um, I would encourage you to apply for those scholarships. Um, so that's the Chamber, Eagle Mountain Arts Alliance is going strong, they're gonna be doing their story walk, um, and, let's see, oh yeah, Pony Express Events has a rodeo this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and I believe there are still tickets available, but I know I got tickets last week, and, um, the good seats are going, so...
No, is, is it still, in the right terminology, is it still like an NFR event? Is that, am I using the right terminology?
It's, it's, it's PRC, PRC, which stands for professional rodeo. So we sanction with the Professional Rodeo Association, there's amateur groups, there's high school, there's, you know, so this is the pros, this is the NBA, the NHL, right, this is the big leagues. Whatever you win at this rodeo qualifies you to go to the finals. Uh, one thing I, and I wanna jump back in real quick, just 'cause I get asked this a lot, and I don't know that anybody's watching this late, but people always ask me, who's coming, when are they up, because every night's a different night. I did mention that we might have some BYU people on Thursday. Uh, two of the Wright, well, they're actually not Wright brothers, but, but people love watching them. Coburn Bradshaw, who is the in-law to the Wrights, he married the sister, is up Thursday night, the...
And those that don't know, I mean, those are national champions.
Oh, yeah, these are, these are the guys that are, that are famous, right? I'm not telling you every writer, they're here, Thursday. Coburn's here Thursday with, with his other brother-in-law, and then Friday, the other two nephews, which are Cody, three-time world champions' sons, they're up on, uh, Friday night. And then Saturday night, we have, uh, two bull riders that are coming, Ryland Wright and, uh, not as, not Cody Wright family, he's, uh, from Heber, and, uh, Dallin Duncan, and some of those guys are on Saturday. So I get asked who's coming which nights, so if you're looking for the Wright sons, they're here Friday. The, the in-laws are here Thursday, and, uh, there, there's, I'm trying to think, big names that, that somebody, the Wrights are usually the ones I get asked, so, so that, that's the answer.
Cool, Councilmember Curtis?
I, let's go home. The, the seniors council had to cancel, uh, so they didn't need, and then, what is my other one?
I'm sorry.
You should, you should ask Councilmember Gray, he knows.
Councilmember Gray, do you know what my other assignment is? Um, oh, it's planning commission.
Yeah, I was gonna ask if it was planning.
So it's planning commission, and I've been attending those online, so, I think our last one was canceled. That's why I, so the last one was canceled, but...
Okay, cool, uh, you know, one thing I neglected to mention earlier in, in the announcements is tomorrow is the grand opening of Macy's. Yeah, so, so, yeah, yeah, so we're looking forward to that, that's a big deal. Um, you know what, and I have to apologize to you for one of, one of the things that I, it just, I, I just totally spaced it, I should've brought it up long ago, I, I know this council, Eagle Mountain City Council, not this council, has, has taken a position in the past on CDBG funds, uh, and, uh, the reason, uh, the council in the past has bowed out to, of the CDBG funds is because of the contractual language was just uncomfortable.
I recall there was something from the Obama administration the last time that said that we were defunding police or something.
I, I, I'd have to pull it out to refresh my memory, it just, it, it just felt kinda politically a little creepy. Um, but the funds, the funds can be used for really good things, and, uh, you're not committed, like, if, even if we, uh, decided to opt in, we're still, we're, we're not required to accept the funds, but, but the funds don't go directly to the city, they go to toward, toward the residents. Um, and, and the, the deadline for that, we're, we're gonna blow the deadline, 'cause I think the deadline is the 17th, so we, we could not get it on the next, uh, agenda, but, but, um, uh, you know, I apologize for not bringing that forward sooner, just to kinda review it, uh, but in the, in, in the past, the council has been uncomfortable with it, but it's something for us to talk about, i- i- if nothing else, at least for the future, uh, if, if, if there's a change of opinion there, uh, so, um, I will, I, 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 I'll get that information, send it out to you, and just, so you'll have it, so, uh, but yeah, I think that's all I have, so. All right, with that, I'll...
Yeah, a motion to adjourn?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Gray, a second by Councilmember Love, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it is 9:15, and we are adjourned, thank you very much.